Let's begin to pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The council has received the minutes from the city council meeting from October 20th. Are there any comments or revisions? Hearing none, the minutes are approved by unanimous consent. We're going to be doing the agenda a little different today. We'll do the public comment section after the Rockwell presentation. I will ask that as Rockwell's representatives are speaking that everyone in the audience remain quiet and respectful, allow them to give their presentation. Following their presentation, we'll open it up for public comment, so whether you are for Rockwell's project or against, you will have your chance to have your statement heard as well. With that, let's move to 2964 Rockwell presentation.
Mayor, council members, my name is Bjorn Andersson. I'm Senior Vice President of the Rockwell Group for Group Operations and Technology. I'm a Danish citizen, as you can hear in my accent. I've been working more than 20 years for the Rockwell Group amongst others internationally, for 12 years in various plants in Malaysia, Poland, the UK, and Scandinavia, and I've spent thousands of hours on our factory floor. I'm happy to have with me today my colleague Peter Regenberg, who is VP for our US Operations, who will support the presentation. I would like to thank the mayor and the council members for inviting us here tonight and express how we see the things. We're also grateful to the local and state officials who have participated in the bidding process that led us to choose Jefferson County, and we stand ready this evening to continue addressing the question with facts. As you know, Jefferson County competed with 50 different counties in 10 different states to have us locate here, and with good reason. We're ready to invest more than 150 million dollars in this community and create at least 150 local well-paid jobs. We are happy to be in Jefferson County, and we want to be a valued contributor to the local community. We have been criticized for not engaging with the whole community in Jefferson County. We have taken this criticism to heart and strive to talk with you on your terms. We have held four sessions of open houses, and we are pleased with the number of people who has participated in those open houses. We have participated in several council meetings and board meetings, and we continue to be at your disposal if you need any clarifications. At the same time, we are disappointed that a concerned citizen group publicly encouraged people to boycott the event. We would have liked to talk with all of them. We think that the facts presented would have addressed their concerns about what kind of neighbor we will be, but we do appreciate that roughly two dozen of the protesters came into our open house after the homecoming event to ask questions. We have reached out several times to Chris Kinnan and Regina Hendricks to engage in a constructive dialogue. Unfortunately, they have declined to meet with us so far. That's their choice, but I say to them that our door remains open at any time if they should change their minds. Before going any further, however, I would like to address some claims made by the opponents to the project. Please know that we have no problems responding to people's concerns and answering very detailed questions from our future neighbors. We think it is part of our job. However, it's also part of our job to respectfully push back against statements and claims that is blatantly false. As Senator Manchin has said, people are entitled to their own opinions, but not their own facts. We hear that the facility will cause human illness, environmental catastrophe, and destruction of property value. We have been operating for more than 80 years around the world. We have more than 45 manufacturing facilities around the world, and we don't see such problems. If you look at our, if you look at the property value in Milton, Ontario, it has gone up 400% the last 40 years while we have operated there. We have seen posters with children in gas masks. I have been around Rockwell plants for 20 years. I have visited almost all the plants we have in the world, and I have never seen such a child in such a gas mask. I have lived near these factories. I have raised my children close to these factories, and we are all fine, and so are the many neighbors I have met in my time in Rockwell. We hear claims that we destroy farmland that will kill the wildlife and sicken livestock. In Wales, where I have been the technical director, there's a woodland learning facility on the grounds where schoolchildren come to learn about the flora and fauna of Wales, where they can hear about the resident wildlife, such as bats, birds, lizards, rabbits, badgers, and deer, and the list goes on. No one of these children have become ill, none of them have died, and they do not wear gas masks when they visit our sites. Close to the factory, there's a riding school, there's herds of sheep, and there's cattle grazing. We also hear we will have a negative impact on the tourism in Jefferson, naturally a big economic impact due to the great history of Jefferson County. In Croatia, where you all know we had some challenges in 2008 and 2009, not to dissimilar to what we see here today, the tourism strives and grows year on year. Tourists from all over Europe go to the eastern region, the very location of our factory, to experience the great future, nature, and beaches, all just a few miles from our plant. Less than five miles from our facility in Sika Cipser, Poland, which is one of the largest stone wool manufacturing sites in the world, a luxury wineyard has recently been established bringing winemaking to the region along the river. My good friend, Mr. Jay Mansfield here, made a post about how we would be a significant health risk due to methanol and that people would die due to this. Let me ask, if this was a legitimate analysis and a realistic scenario, don't you think it would have played out some point previously in our Rockwell 80-year history? With 45 manufacturing facilities in North America, Europe, Russia, and Asia, the fact is, it has not happened. Some people have also said that we cannot operate in Europe, we relocate to North America due to the less stringent environmental standards here. This is simply not true. We have plants in UK, in Norway, Denmark, Germany, Poland, France, Holland, Spain, Switzerland, Croatia, Hungary, and the Czech Republic. We also have factories in Russia, Malaysia, Thailand, China, and as you know, in Canada and the US. All of this is real-world experiences. Once again, shows a very different reality to the tales of destruction that we hear await the people of Jefferson County once our plant is in operation. Whether the good people of Jefferson County already have good-paying jobs here or elsewhere, we accept that some people in the area do not want the type of facility in their community because they want the county to develop differently. That's between them and the elected leadership. It's not our place to comment on Jefferson County's economic policy, but for discussing what kind of neighbor we will be, we are here and ready to discuss with the members of the city council what the facts are. One of the major concerns that the community members have expressed involves air quality, and especially the impact on the sensitive populations, such as children, the elderly, and people with asthma. Here it's important to emphasize that two of the most important governing standards and legal limits are the National Air Quality Standards and what is called the Maximum Achievable Control Technology Standard, abbreviated as the MAC standard. I will particularly focus on the MAC standard. The MAC standard is a specific legal limit on the emissions related to our industry. It is a standard that is under constant review and is being updated every eighth year. Last time was in 2015, with the heavy involvement of the Sierra Club. The Sierra Club was party to and a very active participant in the entire rulemaking process that culminated additional limits being imposed in 2015. The Sierra Club accepted these limits, which they played a major role in crafting. The EPA concluded that these emission limits for mineral wool manufacturing provides an ample margin of safety for human health and the environment with focus on the sensible population. The National Air Quality Standards are equally set to protect that vulnerable population. It is also set to protect livestock, buildings, visibility, and the crops. We have been around for 80 years. We are the largest maker of environmentally friendly stone wool insulation in the world. We are successful because we are a responsible company dedicated to bringing the most sustainable insulation and other stone wool products to the global markets. This includes operating our plants with a minimum impact on our local environment, and we continue to reduce this impact year on year. We welcome anyone to talk to us, get the facts on the table. We are ready to form a stakeholder group with all well-represented and diverse participation. To us, this seems like the only way forward. With that background, I would like to turn to Peter, who will go more into the details of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Bjorn. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Peter Regenberg. I am VP of US Operations. I've been with Rockwell for 23 years, most of those years in operations. I live currently in the US. Over the past four weeks or months, we've shared information with city councils and with boards. We are not going to share that same presentation and that same information tonight. You will see a new presentation. On the contrary, or in addition to that, we sent you a pre-read earlier today, which you've all received.
Can you speak up a little?
And I hope you had, you've all received a pre-read. Maybe I'll, can you hear me now? Okay. Sorry, I'll repeat that. We have sent you a preview from the Jefferson County Development Authorities Meeting last week, which you hopefully all had time to read prior to this meeting. We have received input and questions from the, from the last month. We've chosen to cover four, four areas: air quality, water, jobs, and sustainability. So let me start speaking to air quality. As said before, we have the MAC standard in place, which we are of course compliant to, which is also, it's a standard that's designed to, to protect against decreased visibility as well damage to animal, crop, vegetations, and, and building. We have, we have, that standard has been, has been made and designed in 2015, which the Sierra Club was party to and very actively participated in the entire MAC rulemaking process, and that was setting these new strict air standards for our type of industry. The Sierra Club accepted these limits, and in which they played a major role in crafting, specifically for our industry and specifically geared to protect the health and well-being of the sensitive population. In addition to that, the EPA concluded that this new standard allows ample margin for safety for human health and the environment. Before I move on to the next slide, we have talked and had some key concerns from the community in terms of air quality, and we have committed to install air quality monitoring stations in the community, which will be operated by a third party. We will collaborate with the community on the location of those, that determines where they should locate it and what we should monitor. We've also been asked by the school board to participate in a health risk, independent health risk assessment, which is targeted at schools, and in which we also said yes to participate and contribute. Taking you to Europe, Rockwell is operating in more than 45, operates more than 45 facilities around the world, of, where six is shown on this map, and is also, and is located in what we call Central West Europe. One of those locations, and I want to point up in the upper right corner, called Flexingin. I'll share with you an example of where Rockwell and Clean Air is cohabitant. The town is called Flexingin. It's designed as a health resource zone with focus on respiratory disease recovery. In that town, the Rockwell factory is located only half a mile, or 0.6 miles, from the perimeter of this health resource zone. Citizens across from Germany comes to this town every year, in fact, more than 200,000 people a year, visits Flexingin for this health resource and revitalizing environment. With that, I would like to switch on to a topic we have had some questions on before in the community here over the last month, which is the bees and bee farms. And really, I wanted to point out that a few examples of where we have bee farms close to our factory, within a five-mile radius in Milton, Ontario, where we have a production facility, we have two bee farms. And then we have one in Denmark, which is half a mile away from the factory, producing, selling honey, and, and supporting the local crops. And if you allow me, I have brought a sample from one of those bee farms, the one that's half a mile away from Denmark. This is, this is the product they make, and they're selling there. So if you're interested, you can, you can look at that afterwards. Moving on to water, and specifically wastewater, and I just want to make it clear here, and we have said this a few times before, that there is no production process wastewater that's been discharged into the waterways, to the sewer system, to the ground, to the stormwater system. It is, what we discharge is purified water, meaning we take the clean water from Jefferson Utility, and we purify it just like you would do at home in, in a purification plant or taking the lime out, descaling the water. That's what we're discharging into the sewage system. Jobs and economical development. We have and will be providing 150 local jobs. They are spread over 80%, being technicians on the line, which has a salary range of $35,000 to $55,000. The remaining 20% of the workforce will be leadership positions, which in average will be paid $85,000 per year. With that, there's a series of benefits. I think it's important to point out that healthcare, the medical, the dental is supported with an 85% employer-paid share. We have a 401K plan, which is, is a plan that is matching up to 6%, and then there's two to three weeks vacation with those jobs. And I'm not going to go through this slide and all the detailed points on it, but just pointing out, there's also a multiple employee programs that's supporting with benefits to the employees, and as well as, as a community outreach we're supporting in the local community. What you can see up there on the monitor, various charities. If you look at construction and the local economy, we are going to have up to 250 workers here, starting in a couple of months, supporting the construction of the facility, and that will end towards the middle of 2020. Of course, these workers will be out there in the community. They'll be supporting the local businesses with hotels, restaurants, grocery stores, vendors, et cetera. We also estimate that approximately $10 million of the contract to build the facility, which we're just starting up now, will be subcontracted to local contractors. When the factory is built, we estimate we'll generate $5 million annually in local economic activities, and in addition to that, we see 150 indirect jobs. So on top of the direct jobs in the Rockwell facility, a facility like this also supports 150 indirect jobs. And then there is a, as we have, you may have heard and read before, we will be contributing with, with taxes, $4 million until 2029, and then after that, we will be paying full taxes and will not have the tax abatement program called pilot. And with that, I'd like to hand it back to Bjorn to talk about sustainability.
Our products are by nature an important part of fighting climate change. If you look at our building products, they save approximately 80 times the CO2 emitted during the production process in the lifespan of the product. If you look at the technical installation, which is insulation to insulate oil rigs, different types of refineries, it's up to 4,000 times the CO2 emitted during the production process that we save during the lifespan of the product. Once the products have served its purpose, they are 100% recyclable. We can make new Rockwell out of old Rockwell. We are, we also produce a substrate that is called growdine. This helps growers have more efficiency in greenhouses and thereby save approximately the equivalent of drinking water equivalent of what 85,000 people need a year, all the space compared to 300 central parks. Our products are an important part of achieving passive house standards. That means high energy efficiency of the houses that all of us live in, and protects us against the cold in the winter and the heat in the summer, and we protect life due to the natural, natural non-combustibility properties of our products. Stone wool simply can't burn. If you look at our sustainability profile as such, and I brought with me today our sustainability report, and there should be enough copies for all the council members and a few more. Sustainability is an important part of our DNA and our company purpose and the strategy. Rockwell have committed to 10 of the UN sustainability goals, of which six is related to the factory footprint. That means we want to achieve world-class health and safety standards in our factories. We want to minimize the use of clean water. We want to reduce the CO2 footprint of our factories. We want to reduce the energy consumption of our own buildings, and we want to reduce and eliminate waste to landfill. At the same time, we want to enable reclaim waste from municipalities and from other industries. We have achieved the second highest rating in the carbon, sorry, in the carbon disclosure program. Amongst investors with high sustainability profiles, we get the highest possible ratings. Last, the SDG, a venture capitalist fund with a sustainability profile that is high, have chosen Rockwell amongst 65,000 screened companies to be on the top 100 list. Our core is sustainability, and our products is part of a global problem called climate change. Those were the final words from Peter and I, and once again, thank you for listening, and we are of course at your disposal to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
First, thank you for coming here today to speak, and I will allow members of council to ask you and Peter some questions.
I have a kind of a technical question. Very briefly, how is your product manufactured?
Sure. Fundamentally, what we do, we melt volcanic rock at approximately 2,700 degrees Fahrenheit or 1,500 degrees C. When the melt, when the rock is that hot, it is actually as thin as, as motor oil in viscosity, and then we put it on a spinner. That spinner creates a fiber, kind of a metharide or metho, where you drag along tail because it's instantly accelerated. We spray some bind-on, approximately 2% of the total weight of what we produce in the factory is bind. Then we are collecting it and curing it and cutting it and packing it. But the main interesting part of the process is the melting process and where we do the conversion into the fiber, where it goes from this 2,700 degrees Fahrenheit down to 75 in microseconds.
So, I got a couple other follow-up questions. So what is the fuel source?
We are using two fuel sources currently. One will be coal dust that will be delivered in closed tankers, and the second one is gas. We are constantly working on improving our energy efficiency, and the melting technology that we are going to implement here in Ransum have 10% points higher melting efficiency in the typical technologies we have used in Europe, and that also gives us higher flexibility to switch between different fuel forms depending on what is available in the local area.
Where does the raw materials come from? Where's this volcanic rock come from?
Volcanic rock comes, volcanic rock comes from any quarry around.
I know where it comes, but like, where's your, where are your sources of supplies for this particular plant? Are you anticipating?
We don't know yet where the quarry will be, but Peter, perhaps you can answer this more detail. Some studies have been done.
We, we are in the process of sourcing our raw materials, and currently, we have not chosen the actual locations, but we're trying to source as local as we can to the, to the factory, meaning West Virginia, both on the coal side and on the raw material side, if it's at all possible.
So with the raw materials, just an estimate, what are you looking at as far as the tonnage per year that you'll need of this volcanic rock?
If, if we assume that we are going to produce up to 100,000 to 120,000 tons of Rockwell here per year, my estimate is our consumption will be, without knowing the exact figures from the, from the permit, around 180,000 tons, given, depending on the quality of the raw materials, something around that.
Okay, and who are the customers for this product?
The customer, the typical customers, depends, it is the house, house builders, but the typical channel to the market will be through the big box stores like Home Depot and Loews, and then they distribute further out to the developers and the house building companies. Or it can be industrial installations, installations, or big commercial buildings like shopping malls and offices.
And finally, I don't want to filibuster here, just one last question. By Jefferson County?
Proximity to market. If you look at the whole eastern, I think it's called the Eastern Seaboard, something like that, from Washington up to New York, that is where the pop, the density of population is, and therefore also where people live in houses and need houses. And at the same time, what you do see globally is urbanization, so more and more people move into the bigger cities and they need houses to live in, so that is where the developments mainly are. That's the reason why.
Okay, thank you.
Logistics is very important for our business. That's why we need to produce local for local.
Okay, thank you. Sir?
Thank you for coming. I went to your presentation Saturday and spent quite a bit of time with the young lady who deals with your water issues, and I think she runs, or I think she runs your plant, one of your US plants.
Must be Sharon Downe from Mississippi.
Yes, yes. We had a long talk about water. But I want to kind of preface that by saying, asking, Jefferson Utilities has submitted a request with the PSC in Charleston, I think, to roughly supply 400,000 to 500,000 gallons, the capacity, for 500,000 gallons of water a day, but you're mostly going to be using rainwater. I think you're putting in one rain thing, and then you're, you're, you're planning to put in a second rain thing, so most of your production will be using rainwater. But this council has been asked to, in effect, build a $16 million sewer line to your facility, and the only thing that you're going to be using, for the most part, according to your thing, and the young lady, is, you know, toilet facilities and canteen facilities and all like that. And then you have the Mountaineer Gas folks are bringing in a fracked gas line across the Potomac, Morgan County, Berkeley County, into Jefferson County. From everything you said, and, and your other folks had said that you're building a, you'll eventually build a second facility that does ceiling tiles.
Right.
But that's all built into all of your air pollution and water pollution. You've, you've built that all into that. My question is, and for someone that remembers how big that orchard is growing up, do you own that entire site? And it seems as if there is an overcapacity in terms of utilities that are coming in there. Do you know what else is going to be on that site unless you own all of it?
First of all, we don't know, own the full orchard. We own the facility, the, the place we are developing now, and then we had, I think, what is called right of first refuges or something, the stranded land as it's called due to the road. We don't know what else is coming onto that orchard. What we can say is that we have what we have in our permit, and that is what we are. And what we can say is that we have what we have in our permit, and that is what we are, that is the foreseeable plan we have, so. And, and I know a lot of questions that have been posted also on Facebook, has been, this is just the start of an industrial, of heavy industrial area for the orchard. Two things with that, I think anybody will think twice now before they start up such a process. A second thing is, that's actually not what we see around where we build factories. Good examples is Caparosso in Spain, where we built a factory in, I think it was around two thousand, in a similar location to here. The industry is not so far from Pamplona, by the way, if those of you who is interested in touristic attractions. What we see coming up around our facilities is basically two. Come up in the local area because typically we put in, I don't know, five million dollars in that a year. Second thing is, is can be what we call industrial symbiosis. Somebody who can use our waste heat or something like that, yeah. So somebody who can see we, because we, as you rightfully said, we're not discharging much water to the sewage system, but we evaporate a lot of water. Cool down this twenty-seven hundred degree hot furnace. Of course, that heat has value in the winter, because you can use it to heat up your houses, but in the summer it has no value because we are hot enough already. But that could be used for something else, and that's a commodity, for instance, in Denmark, we sell it to the municipalities. We do that other places with the infrastructure in place, but we actually do not see chimneys popping up all over our sites normally. And I have plenty of pictures to show that on Google Earth, by the way. Does that, but we don't own the whole orchard.
It does, and thank you. So then the second question is, you're in the Shenandoah Valley. If you, you've heard that John Denver song, you know, Blue Ridge Mountains, Shenandoah River, yeah. The only place in West Virginia that those, that applies, West Virginia, Shenandoah Valley and Blue Ridge Mountains is here, in, in Jefferson County. Not too far away from Bob, actually, going across the bridge up to the thing. But the Shenandoah Valley is about twenty, twenty-five miles wide. It's about a hundred and fifty to two, two hundred miles if you depended on historians and things like that. Have you built similar facilities in valleys? And, and yours is going to be kind of on the rim or the edge of the northern part of the Shenandoah Valley. Have you built, and then your air quality in the wintertime, you know, whatever you call that.
Immersion, you're thinking of.
Can you speak to that?
Yes, I mean, naturally, I don't know the whole topography of the, of the valley here, that would be a large claim to make. Two things about that, the air modeling we do, or actually our consultants do, and as that the DEP is confirming and also the EPA is looking at, is taking the local mythological conditions into considerations when they do this modeling, and they use five years of local data to do the whole air modeling part. And then the second question, you can say, have we built other plants like this? Our plant in Wales, which is built in seventy-nine and granted in an old coal mining district, is also placed in similar topography, but with different melting technology. And then we have the Croatian plant, which is also located in a valley, but again with a different technology. So, the technology we have here, which is cleaner, don't have many of these steam issues, you can say, because here we use what is called a WESP, which is a much more sophisticated abatement technology. I don't see why that should be an issue here. But it has been taken into account when ERM, our consultants, did the modeling, and also when DEP did the same modeling.
Okay, well, thank you. And then the last question, because I, I went on your website and I tried to look up the, the economics of your, your, your company.
Yes.
You were started about eighty years ago.
Eighty years last year, yes.
You were, you're a company, but at some point you converted, your, your mother, main company is actually, didn't it convert to a charity?
Correct.
And so ultimately, you are a big charity that builds big, heavy industries.
Yes, we are a heavy industry. If you look at the ownership, we are a family-controlled business, still listed on the Danish stock exchange. When the brothers took over after their father, they knew that this generation changes over time could tear up the company. So they put all their stocks into the Rockwool Foundation, which today supports, I don't know what the English word is, social science, looking at how is, for instance, immigration affecting economy? How is, how is crime affecting the economy? Everything related to making the communities and society better, and all the dividends from the shares goes to that kind of research, which is then announced two, three times a year. It is correct, we are a heavy industry, but we are a heavy industry with a positive impact on our global climate. We are a heavy industry that has eighty years' experience of operating, and therefore also we know how to behave in a responsible way. And what is special about our ownership, and not many people, these family who is amongst the twenty richest families in Denmark, live as you and I, you and I, or at least as you, I don't know how you live, but as normal families, because they don't live a decadent life. Everything goes back into the business, and therefore it's also very unusual that we are a company without depth. It's very unusual, I mean, any venture capitalist would, would love us, and, but we are committed to Stonewall. We are committed to sustainability, and I really do encourage you to take this sustainability report. You might think it's greenwashing, it is not. This is our blood, this is our DNA, this is the passion we live by every day when we produce.
Thank you.
I got a few, is that all right? Okay. I'll go back to, we'll pick on Peter since you, you brought up water. Can you go over that process again? What exactly is coming on down to Charlestown's water treatment facility?
Yeah, so like I said before, we are discharging purified water, so we are taking the water that comes in. It has minerals in it, and those minerals we are removing from the water because those minerals can corrode the internal of steel and iron and so on, and, and that's, that mineral is going to be returned to the waste treatment plant.
Do you mind if I piggyback?
It's like your water softener at home, we take the lime out, for instance.
Okay. Do you mind if I piggyback on that a little bit, Nick? Go right ahead.
Sorry.
Are there any chemicals involved in the manufacturing process that will be in your sewage after it's treated?
No, we have reused ponds, as we call it. So, for instance, our binder that is used in the process is, is mixed with water inside the facility and, and that is reused. So no chemicals will leave the site, it will all be captured in what we call a reused pond that will go back into the production process and consumed there. It is not being emitted into the sewage system or any other wastewaterways being stormed or, or just outside our property.
So then for your water permit, there will be no listing of, of chemicals other than minerals found in typical water?
Correct. Sorry, thank you.
All right, no, that's fine, that's fine. Are you, I was for, it was for both of you, but are you cooperating with other county agencies that have requested independent health assessments beyond air emissions?
What we.
I don't follow every single, you know, public meeting or anything like that, but I know that's, that's been a common request as far as any, any impact to our environment or anything like that, and any independent studies, third party, by, by an independent third party that can say, okay, this is what we're looking at.
So what we have committed to is, is to support the healthcare risk assessment, which we were asked by the school board. That, that's the commitment we've given, provided firm support to so far. And of course, we, we've committed that and we want to support that and, and, yeah, to the best of our ability, but again, make sure it's, it's a school board that is, that is driving it and determining what they're looking for, and, and we can be advising, we can be sitting on the sideline, but it's important for us, it's, it's impartial and third party, and, and the data coming out is, is of course coming from third party.
Do we have a timetable on when that's going to happen?
We are working with the school board on that. I mean, there has to be established a commission that is, that is choosing the experts, so that it's not us choosing the experts. Or, so that is, so first we have to establish this commission, where we also invite the opposition to participate, and then that will be chosen by that independent commission, you can say, where all representatives are. So before we have formed that, it is difficult to say, we, we know how the study should be done, but we don't want to say how it should be done because, so it depends on how fast that commission can select the expert.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Nick.
Going back to water, your facility in Mississippi, is that the only other facility in the United States that you all have operate?
Correct.
And have there ever been any water, air violations at that facility?
Just to be clear on that, it's the only mineral facility that we operate in, yeah. Sorry, your question again?
Has there ever been any water or air violations at that facility?
No, we have, we have zero complaints from our neighbors in Mississippi, and we don't have any violations either.
Never had a Clean Water Act violation at that facility?
I don't believe so, but you know, I would like to get back to you with, with an answer on that, but I don't, I do, I'm not aware of it, so.
Do you know Bjorn?
No.
Not aware of any?
We will come back. We'll come back, to make sure we say what, what we say is correct.
There are a lot of people watching, I'm sure they're already Googling to see if it's right or not, so we can come back to that in a little bit. Will you be, will your plant, the, let's talk a little bit about the stacks. It's from what I've read, about two hundred feet, give or take.
Two hundred and thirteen point two, I believe, yes.
Will they be adding air pollution to Jefferson County?
Our air permit clearly states what the maximum emitted limits are.
No, I understand that, but they will be adding air pollution to Jefferson County, correct?
Yes, otherwise it would make no sense building a stack, obviously.
Of course.
But what is important to state here is that when we model the impact on the air quality, we cannot see, the impact is negligible. That is what we see on all the modeling. And we are modeled, for instance, what the, but what we have to understand with this is, the air permit is, is the worst-case scenario. We will never see those tons in real life except for a few of the combustion parts, but from the binder components, hardly any of them will, will ever be at that amount there, yeah. But we still model with that, and even with that, we can see basically the air quality is the same.
So are the chemicals that are dispersed from those smokestacks, do they cause human illness? Have they, have they been known to cause human illness?
Everything, if you get enough of it, will cause human illness.
Well, of course, but in industrial facility emitting those to a community, does that contribute to human illness? Will your facility contribute to human illness?
But that is why the EPA and the Sierra Club have defined what is the healthy and safe limits that you are allowed to, to breathe.
Do they define it as?
That is based on hard science, not, it's, it's not me who sets those limits, I'm, I'm not the guy who's.
The EPA?
EPA that works with, with different stakeholders, and as I said before, with the MACT, the Maximum Available Abatement Technology, is, that was updated in two thousand and fifteen with the participation of key stakeholders, collecting data for more than two years of plants. By the way, also telling the industry which people should collect those data. And after that, it came out, said if you are below these limits, it is safe to operate. So therefore, when we are well below those limits, what I have to assume is.
They say it's safe to operate, or they say you're allowed to operate?
Safe to operate.
Okay.
And I would also like to say in this respect that actually the WHO made a huge study back in the early two thousands, released a report in two thousand and one, where they had studied the impact from, from manufacturing on the workers in the factory, which you would have to assume are the people exposed the most, because they spend twenty-four seven in the plant and all this. Came out and said there is no, what is it called, exceedance in, for instance, cancer. So there's solid science behind that, and we believe the science is very robust, and the standards have only become tougher and tougher and tougher over the years. So comparing a plant today with how it was twenty years ago actually makes no sense.
And so, I guess I recognize, and I'm certainly not a science, scientist or a chemist, I just watch kids, that's what I do. But I think from what I'm reading, the most dangerous things that you'll be emitting are particulate matter. Do you think that's a correct assessment?
I think particulate matter, the last five, six years have regained much more attention than before, especially PM two point five, which is what you refer to.
And, and you'll be releasing that?
Yes, but well below the standards, well below the standards.
Well below the allowable standards.
Well below the standards that the authorities have defined as being safe to humans.
Well, any particulate matter is not safe, correct? I mean, if you inhale it directly, it's not safe to your health.
That would be the same as saying go out into the sunshine is not healthy, because that also gives you cancer, so I think that.
Of course.
So, 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 please.
Please, please, please.
So, we are, I think if you look at particulate matter, our contribution on the PM two point five, at the worst-case scenario, is one-sixth of the allowable exposure.
But any exposure is dangerous, correct, and linked to.
No, I will not say that is correct, because the scientists have said what is safe, and we are one-sixth of that, so.
The EPA says, "The size of particles is directly linked to their potential for causing health problems. Small particles, less than ten micrometers in diameter," and you'll be producing PM ten and PM two point five, correct? "Pose the greatest problems, because they can get deep into your lungs and some may even get into your bloodstream. Exposure to such particles can affect both your lungs and your heart. Numerous scientific studies have linked particle pollution exposure to a variety of problems, including premature death in people with heart or lung disease, non-fatal heart attacks, irregular heartbeat, aggravated asthma, decreased lung function, increased respiratory symptoms such as irritation of the airways, coughing, or difficulty breathing. People with heart or lung diseases, children and older adults are the most likely to be affected by particle pollution exposure." So certainly all, all PM two point five is dangerous to health.
I think it's fantastic that the scientists have discovered this now, and that's also why in two thousand and fifteen they set much stricter standards on this particular area.
And don't get me wrong, I understand that industry is a necessary component, I absolutely do, and I, and I, I drive a car, I deal with pollutants, and I, I absolutely understand that. But at the same point, we live in a county that doesn't pollute, not to that extent. I believe what I read was the, all of the, you know, allowable air permits combined in this county lead to eighteen tons of pollution in the air per year, and yours is what, five fifty, eighty, somewhere around there?
Somewhere around.
Less than six hundred, more than five hundred. And so that's, that's a little questioning to me that the EPA says that those particles lead to all of these effects.
But sir, I, I, that, as I said before, I'm really happy that the scientists have come up with this discovery, and that's also why the, the standards are reviewed every eight years, because new, new discovery comes up. We are well below the standards that the EPA had to have defined as being safe, and that is what we relate to, we have to be in compliance.
I think we disagree on if the EPA defines them as being safe or if the EPA defines them as being allowable.
They define.
My car is defined as being safe, however, if I shut myself in the garage with it, I'll be dead.
Exactly. But, and that's exactly the point, isn't it? Depends on, because then you'll be exposed to carbon monoxide, and that will steal your ability to transport oxygen. So that all depends on exposure again. But they, but the standards are defined to protect the vulnerable population. So the standard set by the National Ambient Air Quality is to protect the elderly, the children, and people with asthma, like myself, for instance, I suffer from asthma, by the way, I had that from birth, just so you don't connect it with where I work. And the standard set, we are one-sixth below that standard on PM ten, on PM two point five. And that is defined as being safe for the elderly, for.
Allowable for the elderly.
Safe for the, it says specifically so in the.
I guess, I guess my question would be, can I breathe in what is coming out of your smokestack and within five feet of it and expect to have good health outcomes?
I don't know, but, but that would be the.
So they're relying on the dispersion over an area?
That is why there is a chimney, of course, the same as you have, I mean, if you, if you was putting your head into the exhaust of your car, I also guess you would be sick quite fast, but yet here we all are.
Well, we require.
And life expectancy is increasing all the time.
Well, we require some things to function as a first-world country and to, to live our lives in the manner that we're.
True.
And so those things, some of them unfortunately are necessities, others are not. How, are there a lot of the chemicals that are coming out of those smokestacks that are lighter than air? I mean, I, I'm looking at the list, I assume nitrogen oxide is probably lighter than air.
I don't know exactly what the molecular weight of the individual compounds, but I guess some of them are.
Think it's safe to say most of them are heavier than ambient air?
Might be.
Sulfuric acid mist, heavier, sulfuric acid mist, heavier than ambient air?
Possibly so, yes.
So, once it's released, it starts drifting down to the earth, correct, in the surrounding area?
Which is part of dispersion models. Every single compound, the dispersion model is done for that compound, exactly for that reason, taking the topography of the local areas into consideration.
Now, is it true, I read an article from Milton, um, I believe it was, but it wasn't, could have been Mississippi. Is it true that residents around the plant had complained about particulate matter and a, a, maybe I shouldn't use the word particulate matter, because I don't know what it is, but a layer of some sort of substance on local swimming pools in the area?
I would not know, I know that there has been issues in Milton, Toronto, uh, or Milton, Ontario, mainly because of the old production line that has been built before we took it over in eighty-eight. Um, and by the way, that melting technology is not being used here at all.
So you don't know if anybody's ever complained of that?
Specifically about a, a swimming pool, no, that I don't know specifically about, I know there has been, uh, smell issues before with H two S, which smells like rotten eggs, and that has been solved.
How long did that last?
I think the, uh, things were solved around, you know that better, because you've been, but I think two thousand thirteen or something like that. Yeah, that is, that's correct, that, that was solved, uh, in a couple, I think it took a couple of years before that, we got to the bottom, to the root cause of that, and got it resolved.
That was an unexpected, something unexpected that happened, that was a negative consequence that you weren't planning on?
From the old technology, that, but not.
From the plant?
Yeah, from the old plant, but that would not happen here, because we have a much newer technology here.
What was the negative tech, what was the negative, uh, result of the Ontario thing that you were just mentioning?
It smells bad.
It was a smell?
An H two S just smells very, very bad.
I just, I just want to clarify what, what it was, that's all.
H two S, that comes from, uh, from, uh, from melt, from burning coke, that has some, uh, sulfur in it.
Just for, uh, some council members in the public that might not be familiar with some of the news articles, is it, and just trying to help you out here, Councilman Trainer, is it fair to say that kind of a summary of it was, uh, there started to be a smell within miles of the plant, uh, maybe not miles, maybe within one mile, I'm not sure.
Quite close proximity.
And it took you guys about two years to figure out what was the emanation of that smell?
Yes, that, that might be fair. I would say last year, we actually registered all complaints, that's not the same as I can remember all of them, just to say that now.
So you don't remember anything about swimming pools?
No, I don't, I don't, I don't read every complaint we have. Last year, we had eighty-seven complaints worldwide, uh, in our forty-five plants, so an average two per plant. Uh, most of them from the el- older plants, uh, the older technology, you have to remember, such a plant can last forty years. Of course, it's successively upgraded, um, but, but I think that was around the number eighty-seven last year. We register every single one of them globally, and we also have a mitigation plan for every single one, that is being followed up on corporate level.
Now, earlier you said that you were installing air quality monitor, air quality monitoring stations, where will those be located?
Uh, that depends on where the community wants them to be located, we have said we will sponsor them.
I thought you said that you had property owners that were, that you were working with to put these on their property.
Uh, no, we're looking, we have asked the communities where would they like the air monitors to be. I guess it would be fair to say that one of them will be the North Jefferson School, uh, but elsewhere, we want to sponsor it, we want to facilitate it, but we don't want to run it. So we will, we will fund it, but we want, want to have independent company to run it, to make sure it's not the wolf, uh, watching the sheep, or whatever it's called. And we will put up, will in advance, uh, for the plant operating, so we also get the background.
Approximately, how much does one of those cost?
Oh, I don't know.
And, I mean, ballpark?
I don't know, it's a lot, it's expensive, hundred thousand dollars apiece.
Hundred thousand dollars? How much does your parking lot there cost?
How much does parking lot cost?
Pay for parking lot?
I don't know, sir.
I just paid mine, it was a hundred thousand, I just own a daycare. So it's kind of, you know what I'm saying, like, it seems like it's, in relation to a hundred and fifty million dollar project, a hundred thousand dollars to monitor the air, doesn't seem like a very large expense.
But, uh, we have also not argued against it, and if we have to put forward, we put forward, I mean.
No, honestly, I think the county should assist in that, that we should try to also fund those anywhere we can around the plant, I agree with you. I think it's both of our responsibilities to provide the funding for that.
But what is important is, we don't want to say what it should be.
You don't want to say what?
We don't want to determine where it should be, I think the community should determine that. And, uh, we also don't want to say who should be the independent company, I also think that is, has to be done by somebody who, um, have as an objective opinion about it.
So, so obviously, as the Charleston City Council, we have to evaluate the sewer bonds for this project. Um, I was assuming you might be able to lead us a little bit through how that came to be, how that process started, I know kind of how it got to, well, I know when it got to us and how it moved past there, but how did that process begin?
I think, Peter, you could better explain.
Yeah, I can answer that.
And I apologize, any other council members, if you want to jump in, please feel free. I'm, I'm a talker.
All right, so originally, when we started this, uh, project, we worked with the city of Ranson, and we, uh, formulated what's called memorandums of understanding, um, and that was for utilities, it was for the pilots, um, and it was an understanding of being able to receive these kind of utilities for, for our project. I understand then, in the middle, uh, in the meanwhile, that, that utility, uh, the sewer, is no longer with, uh, Ranson, city of Ranson, it is now passed on to you. So, you know, we have an, an agreement with them, which has been passed on to you, uh.
I don't believe it's been passed on us, we didn't sign an agreement with you.
No, but the responsibility, uh, is my understanding, uh, came from the city of Ranson.
Yeah, we had to check.
When we took it over.
Point of order, we did accept it, when we took over the assets of the Ranson sewer system. In the document, it said we took over all document, all signed documents that they signed, so it was in there.
I'm sorry, shouldn't have interrupted.
Okay, that is the process for the sewer that we've gone through?
So, obviously, there's a financing package involved, given by the state for this project. Um, I believe, and somebody will jump in, maybe Councilman Trainer, Councilman Tolbert, I believe it started at twelve million, and we increased that to sixteen million in order to accommodate for any increases in cost?
I think it started at fourteen, and then it was, we, it was increased to sixteen.
How did that come to be, that, that financing of that from Charleston, I assume you all met with them in Charleston, correct?
Yeah, so when, when we do a project like this, we speak, spoke to the state first, and I believe the number is six million, that's, that's the number I have, uh, and we made an, sorry?
No, I was disagreeing.
Okay, I, we believe the mo- the number is six million, the bond, that's, uh, that's up for, uh, vote, October first.
Up for the vote is sixteen million, my recollection is, it's not really supposed to cost that, however, we're adding that in, just in case there are increased costs during the construction process.
Yeah, so that was worked in with the state, that agreement, that the state will, uh, will supply that bond, and then, uh, in these memorandums, we're understanding with the state as well.
Were, were both of you present at those meetings in Charleston, either of you?
I was present, uh, I've been part of this project for the last, uh, year and a half, and been part of these MOUs, I did not sign them, the president of Rockwell did. But I've been involved in that process, correct?
About how many meetings would you say took place in Charleston for this, that you were present for? Over six, or less than six?
In Charleston, I have not been in, in more than six meetings, no. There has been meetings, of course, here locally in the city of Ranson, but we have met with the state and, and the city, and Jefferson County Development Authority.
And were there any Jefferson?
And those were more than six, sorry.
I'm sorry, were there any Jefferson County representatives present at the Charleston meetings?
I can't answer that question, I don't recall that, I'm, I'm sorry, but I, I mean, I, we can look into that and get back to you.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Mike.
What's that?
Can I?
Of course.
Come off of your question, like to, you have to realize, there are three of us on this council, Mike, Mike, and Mike, so.
It's confusing.
Yeah, Mike, it's, it's, there, you know, um, but, but continuing on a question that Councilmember Brigham brought up, um, you talk about air dispersion models. Um, this country has a really, really bad history of putting, um, large, heavy industry next to, uh, communities that are challenged. Now, you're building a twenty-one story smokestack, literally, and I drove out there today, and depending on where it is, it's literally going to be a quarter mile, or literally right across from North Jefferson. But not just North Jefferson, if, if, could you pull up slide four? You're, you're also, there is a significant, um, housing. Yeah. Um, Fox Glen, back there. It's with, between North Jefferson and, and Fox Glen, you know, that's an area that in many ways, in some ways, has kind of been abandoned since the new highway was put in there, and many people haven't been on that road for many, many years. Um, but there is a, is a history of that. Um, so when you talk about air dispersion, yes, what's going to come out of your twenty, twenty-one story? Smokestack is going to disperse, but has it been modeled where, within a quarter, a mile of the smokestack, will the heavier particulates come down more?
I'm not a model expert as such, I'm, I'm a mechanical engineer, but yes, the individual elements are modeled individually, based, based on their behavior. And amongst other things, we have to, um, define what is at the fence line. So, uh, yes, the individual, uh, elements are modeled at distances.
And, and do you have any of your other plants that have schools next to them?
We have plants that is in the middle of the city, if you look at Moss Norway, the factory is literally in the middle of the city, you can spit to the neighbor, and I'm not exaggerating, you can. Uh, and, um, there's schools in the proximity. Wales, you have a similar situation in Wales as you have here, so you have the, you have the fields, but also at the same time, you have villages around. Uh, it is nothing new for us, and that is perhaps why we have underestimated the importance here. There's nothing new for us to have plants that is very close to both schools and residents. Our factory in Gladbeck, literally in the middle of the, of, of the, of the, uh, of the city also, so that's, it's nothing new for us. Milton is the same, I think there's seven, I cannot remember the exact figure, it is, I think it is in your slide deck, actually. I think Milton has something like seven schools in a very close proximity, and a hospital. So it's not new for us that the plants are this close to residents. But I, we recognize that it might be new for the residents to be so close to us.
I think so.
Uh, yeah, but I, I appreciate that, um, and we are not policymakers. We don't determine how the development of a county should be. We, uh, we have been doing our due diligence, some will argue not good enough, but we have been doing our due diligence, we have had the right discussions with the relevant, uh, authorities. We have got our air permit with, uh, with, and by the way, just to put it clear, the demands in West Virginia and the US is not lenient compared to Europe, okay? It is just as strict, and especially on, 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 on some particular matters, it is much stricter, which is why we have to have abatement technologies over here that we don't have other places in the world. So it is not like we are coming over here and having, can implement old technology that you could not use in Europe anymore, it's actually opposite, we have learned things over here that we can bring back to Europe because of the stricter demands in the US.
Let's have a quick follow-up question, you said you received eighty-seven complaints, that was last year, you said?
Yes.
And were any of those complaints had to do with health relations, or, or, not health relations, but health issues?
No, it is typically, we have two types of complaints, noise, typically from reversing vehicles, where you have a beep on. And second thing is, uh, it can be smell from the older plants.
So there's no complaints at all that impacted anybody's health from any of these?
We have not, and I, I have to be careful to be categorical, because I might, to my knowledge, we have not had a single litigation towards us in the twenty-plus years I've been in the company. And I guess if we had been as dangerous as is put forward, then that would have happened. Uh, we have employees in our plants where, that has, I mean, when I was in Wales, that plant was open in seventy-eight, seventy-nine. I had people there that have, that would have the thirty-year anniversary in nineteen, in two thousand and nine, yeah? The sons was working there, sons-in-law's were working there, and they were happy about being a part of the Rockwell family. Because we actually take this very seriously. So, sir, to my knowledge, not.
And all of them were resolved, with the eighty-seven complaints?
I cannot guarantee that, but if not resolved, then with an action plan to resolve it as fast as possible. And by the way, I also would like to stress, we don't see a complaint negatively. We see there's a possibility to interact with our neighbors and resolve it, because sometimes a silencer on a fan, big fans today have silencers on them, and sometimes they fail. And then we are happy that our neighbors, and I'm sure that will happen here in West Virginia also, is the watchdogs over us, and make sure we rectify problems as fast as possible. But I would also say, again, our newest plants, it is the older plants that have this complaints much more than the new plants.
Thank you.
Um, I have a few questions.
Sure.
Um, you said you only had one plant operating in the United States currently?
Right in Mississippi.
Uh, did you have other plants in the United States before this?
No, and there has been companies in the US operating under the Rockwell name, Rockwell Superfund, I think you're referring to.
Correct.
That has nothing to do with us. Actually, until a year and a half ago, or a year ago, our name in North America was Rox Ull, and it was only rebranded lately, uh, because we want now, because you cannot trademark a generic name in the US. Uh, but we have decided to go with the name anyway, but we have no history with some of these older plants, which by the way, did not produce stone wool, but produced something called slack wool, which is a totally different, uh, product.
Um, and, and leading on to that, uh, superfund sites, our area has, uh, smattering of superfund sites that we end up having to clean up after an industry leaves town. Uh, are you bonding anything if you in case do leave and we're stuck with a mess, or is there any exit plan, I guess?
Not except our, um, our policy. But, but why, 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 why would we leave a plant where we have invested hundred and fifty million euro, dollars?
I'm saying, uh, fifty years from now.
I, I would like to give another example instead, uh, in two thousand and one, we closed a factory in Denmark.
Where?
Hedhusen in Denmark.
Denmark?
Yeah, actually, it was the motherload, it was the holy sacred grounds, it was the first factory. And, uh, I was so lucky to be responsible later on for that site, and I spent more than nine million dollars cleaning up to make sure, and today it's a recreational area, where you can go mountain biking, hiking, there's a, there's even a ski, ski hill there that's been built. So we clean up, but I would also say, if you look at how, how industries in general behaved, and new in the fifties and sixties when this plant was operating, compared to today, the protection we have today is, is totally different.
Right.
Uh, I mean, if you look at a car workshop back in the fifties, when they cleaned out the motor oil, it just went out and through it on the ground, nobody would do that today. So I don't see that risk existing, also our binders are much more, uh, efficient. For instance, we use sugar in our binder today, I mean, that would not happen fifty years ago. But it's a big commitment to invest so much money in a plant. So we don't run away after tax abatement disappears and so on, we are here for the long haul. And therefore, we also want to be a valued member of community, because we actually have to live here. You have a question?
Real quick, I just wanted, before we sort of forget, we do have members of the Building Commission, I'd be more than willing to give up my seat if they had any questions at all.
Sure, any member of the Building Commission who would like to, uh, ask a question? All right.
For the record, I gave you a chance. Can you come on up, because we can't hear you on the video, so, can you want to just?
Just to clarify, trying to understand some of the information we've gotten, and, you know, the public and myself have gotten at some of the meetings, water in, water out. Um, I keep hearing different numbers, so how much water, I, I think I heard four hundred thousand gallons will the plant use a day?
So if we, how much does it rain? Uh, no, the maximum consumption we will have per day is, when we presented at the open house, hundred and twenty-five thousand gallons a day in the event that we cannot rain harvest anything.
Okay, okay, so that's, that's fair.
And what we also say is around twenty thousand gallons, or is it twenty-five, I cannot remember, will go out the sewer system. And then you can do the delta and say, where the hell is the, sorry, my French, where, where is the hundred thousand disappearing? I guess that is your question, water in, water out, that is evaporation. Because you have to remember, remember still, we deal with twenty. Because you have to remember, remember still, we deal with twenty-seven hundred degree F.
Actually, that's not my question.
Okay.
But I heard you. But so to try to stay to my question. So now, if, you know, we don't have rains, we use one hundred and twenty-five thousand gallons of water a day. Now how much will be coming back down the sewer approximately? So I can get the number straight in my head.
But I think that's twenty, isn't that twenty thousand gallons?
Okay.
But that has nothing to do with the intake. That is more what the, you know, the, the, the graph up on the video we had there was talking about, you know, mostly that's from things other than the plant. So that's fine. I just wanted to understand that. But is Jefferson County okay with that water supply? Because we've been wet this year, but we're not wet every year. Is that something that really we can handle?
I thought the little bit of time I've been on the building commission, that I heard one time that we have a special permit to, our water basically comes from the Shenandoah River. And if it gets too low, they dam it up so we can have water. I don't know, I never got straight in my head what that does to people down the river. But if that's all a fact, do we have water to take care of this? And my, my last piece of that question is I heard someone refer to sixteen million dollars as far as financing for the sewer, and you referred to six million. Well, if I have been listening correctly, it's sixteen million for the sewer and six million for the water. Is that right?
I, I think that's right.
They're two different bonds.
Yeah. So what's in front of, what's in front of, the Charlestown City Council is a sixteen million dollar?
And to be fair, the amount that the bond is set for is not the amount that we, we believe or that they believe or that the state believes that this line will actually cost. We inflated that number in order to add in for any increases in construction costs during the process.
Well, we, we all need an emergency fund. I understand that. But I just was trying to clarify that it seemed like both were talking about the sewer. I think his number was for the water, or was for the sewer.
I was speaking to the, what the bond was set for in the MOU.
Speaking to the water bond.
Which was, which was the sewer.
Well, and, and also keep in mind that they're referring to an MOU that we, we haven't seen, we don't have access to that MOU. Ours is our Charlestown ordinance authorizing bonds of sixteen million. So they're, they're kind of two different things related to the same thing, but with different parameters.
Last piece, and so who's doing the water? Jefferson Utilities. That's a whole nother deal. So I understand that that's not part of what the Charlestown City Council was talking about, but still it's part of this entire situation. So I'm just trying to clarify for myself and perhaps in other group. That was all. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm glad you did because that, even talking to your representatives and reading all of our literature, it, it's been unclear to me exactly how much water was coming in there and how much water was leaving the facility. So I thank you for clarifying that. But it, it does leave a, a big question. There's a, there's a huge, if you're not going to use all of the, the resources that are coming into that facility, then, then, and you're only using a quarter of the site, what's going to happen or what else is going to happen to that site? And, and I'm, you've said that you don't know because you don't own that portion, the rest of it. But that is a, I think, a question we're going to have to consider.
All right, we'll have a couple of questions for you. The site you're on now, the old Jefferson orchards, they used to be an old apple grove. They use arsenic on it. My understanding was that the previous owner was going to voluntarily go into a program to remediate that land. You know, was, was that completed?
Yeah, I can answer that question. So we, as, as owner of the one hundred and thirty-six acres that we're building on, we had to go through the VRP program, the volunteer remediation program of, which is managed by DEP. And we tested all of that soil and found no exceedances of the limit from arsenics and, and other substances. We, except for one place, which was around a well, there was a, there was a mixing station there, and it represented five truckloads of soil, which we have removed to an approved landfill for that. Other than that, we have been allowed according to that program to, to turn that soil and move that soil, which in fact, we have been doing. For those of you that have seen the site, it's, we've actually done that.
Thank you. What benefits has the state of West Virginia given you? My understanding, this also includes a two-point-two million dollar forgivable loan.
Sorry?
What benefits has the state of West Virginia given you? My understanding that this does include a two-point-two million dollar forgivable loan. Is that the case?
Yeah, there is an agreement with the, the state on, on the two-point-two million dollar forgivable loan to meet a certain employment number. I believe it's one hundred and thirty employees we have to, we have to employ in order to, to forgive that loan. Other than that, of course, the state of West Virginia is, is contributing with the road, construction of the state road, as we call it, that goes on site.
What was the amount of the loan?
Excuse me?
What was the amount of the loan? What was the amount of the loan?
Two-point-two million dollars.
Million?
Million.
All right. And I'm going to ask a few more questions. This goes on for me, the more troubling aspect of this whole deal, and which is, I think, is a, a lack of transparency. Would you support rescinding the non-disclosure agreements and opening all information regarding this deal with the state, the JCDAs and RANSON, the school board, minus any trade secrets, so that the public has an opportunity to review it?
I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know if I would say something that would be out of order. First of all, with regards to the lack of transparency, there's been some discussions as why we have used a code name for the project. This is very normal to do in events like this, especially when you are listed company, because otherwise you will make all the people you deal with insiders, and that has an effect on your shares. So once you, only once you make the deal, do you go public with the name. We strive to have transparency. And, and if there is a feeling that something has been going on under the board or whatever it is called, that is not the company we are. So whatever we can do to give any type of transparency, we will support. But I don't know if I, if there's some legal requirements that I don't know of that I cannot say, okay? But else, whatever we can do to create transparency, we will support.
Now, another issue here that, that was quite troubling to many of my constituents was a meeting at the Bavarian Inn that occurred, that only members who had signed non-disclosure agreements were allowed to attend. Would you be willing to release the information and the transcript of what was discussed at that meeting?
I'm not aware which meeting you referred to. Yeah, but I was not there, so therefore I cannot say yes or no to that because I was not physically at that meeting. But I would like to come back to you with that answer.
Certainly, I'd appreciate that.
Who was there?
Well, as I, as I was not there, I don't know.
Peter, do you know?
What, what date meeting? Sorry, what, what date meeting are we talking about?
The Bavarian Inn meeting that was.
Maybe like a month ago?
A mon, a month ago?
Yes.
Nice, nice prime rib.
German.
We know what, we know where the Bavarian Inn is, we have been there, but we don't know, I mean.
The one that was publicized in the paper recently?
Okay.
Does anybody have a date?
No, but I, so there's one that also referred to the Shepherdstown meeting, is that correct?
More than likely, yeah.
Yeah.
I think Trent also answered back then that we would be happy to, to give as much information as possible.
Okay, we'll certainly follow up with you on that.
But I was not at that meeting myself, as I said. Yeah, I was at that meeting and there was no information, there was nothing discussed there that, that couldn't be discussed outside that room.
Now, th, this is going in regards to the open houses, house that you had at San Michael's Park. After that event, there was someone by the name of Bjorn, who apparently works for your company, who really made some very troubling statements, one of which was that people were allowing their children to run free at your presentation while they stayed outside in protest. I was there. In fact, I encouraged my wife to go into your, your presentation, and she was treated very, very kindly. But that simply was not the case. That did not happen. I was there, people were watching their own children. And I'm very troubled by that statement because what he's trying to do is to make the people of this county look like they're not good people or that they're just fringe fanatics. And I would like a response from you on that.
You're talking to him, Mr.?
It's me who made that comment, just to be aware. And I was there at all four sessions, in total more than sixteen hours. By the way, you're, I trust you're also aware I posted a apology quite fast after. Perhaps you didn't, because I thought that part of the message was, was me being sarcastic and apparently Dennis' humor is not always well-received on Facebook.
Well, I think his apology was a bit sarcastic as well. It, it really wasn't helpful.
Not at all. I think part of what I said was inappropriate, and I apologize for that. And I also changed the posting afterwards. And I also discussed that with one of the groups on, it was Sean David, I think it is. That being said, it did happen. So in that respect, no, but, but, but to be honest, I, I was there, I know. So it did happen. And actually, I think it is great that it happened because I think, and I also posted that on Facebook, that I really applauded the people protesting outside, that it was done in a way that those who want to visit our venue actually could come in without any issues. And I, and I also went out several times.
Yeah, does anyone have any other questions for him?
I do. And I apologize to any other city council members, but quite frankly, I don't believe, while I'm on city council, and who knows, I could be wrong, that a more important conversation's going to take place than this one. So I have a lot of questions. We might be here for a little bit, so I apologize in advance. I think this goes back to Peter. We talked about, you talked about MACS achievable, what's the C stand for? M A C T.
Control.
And as you described it, that's the MAC standards that you can possibly employ. But didn't, I, I thought when I read the air permit, it said that some of those standards were waived for you because they were cost prohibitive. So it's not necessarily, you're not necessarily employing the MAC standards, the MAC ones within a reasonable cost. Is that fairly accurate to say?
Yeah. The MAC standard is, is based on what's called best available control technology, which, which we are applicable to. So when you look at the, how we are equipping this factory from a control technology perspective, it is the best available control technology that's out there, like the plant we have in Mississippi. It is for instance.
Didn't I read in your air permit that it was the MAC achievable? However, there, there was a better system that you could use, but it was cost prohibitive. So you were asking your air quality permit not to have to use that. Is that correct? And that was approved?
Yeah, to my knowledge, no, that is not correct. And I've been part of this process from the beginning. So, no.
I said, there, there's a lot of information, so I could certainly be wrong about things. Going off of that same slide, you talked about production employees, that approximately eighty percent of the employees will be production employees, approximately twenty percent will be leadership. And then you quoted thirty-five thousand to fifty-five thousand for technicians. Are all production employees technicians?
Yes. So everybody that I mentioned in that range from thirty-five to fifty-five thousand yearly base rate is what we call technicians.
So there's, so that makes up a hundred percent. There's nobody at the plant that makes less than thirty-five thousand dollars a year?
Correct. Maybe I should add to that. These are, these are full-time jobs. These are not, Rockwell doesn't employ part-time employees. So these are two thousand and eighty hours per year on average, which is what's deemed as a, as a full-time position.
Okay. And then down in Mississippi, this one might be better for Bjorn. Bjorn, and I'm sorry, you're the vice president of Rockwell North America?
No. I'm the senior vice president for what is called group operations and technology.
Okay.
So I'm responsible for our R and D, for our engineering department, for our procurement department and so on. I don't have any factories under me right now that is dealt with locally, but used to have it in the past. So I'm sitting in headquarters in Denmark now.
Okay. Is there anybody from your company here tonight that is familiar with the Mississippi plant and the people that work there? Peter?
Peter lives there. That would be me, I live there.
You work down there on a typical basis?
I work down there. I, I've lived there for three years, and, and I'm the one responsible for U.S. operations.
So about how many leadership positions roughly are there? I know that's not a hundred percent fair question, but.
No, no, it's a fair question, and it is exactly that ratio, eighty, twenty.
So how many does that twenty percent represent? Is it the same size as this facility with one hundred and fifty employees?
We have more employees in, in Marshall County, Mississippi, and we have that for the reason we have tile manufacturing as well, which is, is a factory within the factory. There's no ceiling tiles in this building here, but you're familiar with them in, in many ceilings in North America where we produce these ceiling tiles, and, and that requires more employees, both technicians, but also leadership positions. And the split is exactly the same there.
And how many of those leadership positions in Mississippi are held by people that lived in Miss, in that county prior to your facility being constructed there? Do you know of any?
I don't know what the exact number is, but I know that most of the positions there are, are local, whether they live in that county. Marshall County, Mississippi, that factory is sitting very close to the state line, to Tennessee. So a big portion of our employees come from Tennessee.
Do you personally, you know, know the background of any of the, your fellow leadership positions there that are actually lived in that county prior to you coming there?
Yeah, I know, I know the background, yeah, that I, that is from that county. But we also have a demography there where you drive, we have many employees that drives an hour.
Same here.
To, to go to work there. Some of them come from Oxford, Mississippi, Kentucky, Tennessee. So there's a, there's a relatively small town adjacent to our factory, so the employment base there is very close to the factory, it's not that large within that county, Marshall County being it.
Okay. Sorry, just reading over my notes. So obviously, there's some resentment for your company. And, and I, I do feel bad for you. I do. I, I can't imagine being put in a position where you have to debate this all day and justify this. I know that's rough. And I also know that neither one of you own the company. You're, you're, this is your job, you're here to support the company, and I fully respect that. But my question is, we, we talked about NDAs earlier and things like that, and I've heard numerous times from Mr. Ogilvy and from you yourself, that this isn't the Rockwell you know, this isn't the perception that you've ever received before. If all government entities and the majority of the population asked you to leave Jefferson County and not build here and stop construction, would you do it?
No.
No?
Yeah, but, but I think you have to look at it differently. We have, we feel we have done everything that we should do. We have put out, we originally sent a request out for, I think it was fifty-plus counties in ten different states. And we were, we were invited to come here to Jefferson County. We have been working with the authorities on many levels. We have invested heavily in this. But, but by coming here, we also excluded other sites. So we feel that we are in compliance with everything we should be in compliance with, and we also feel we are being.
And for the record, I'd agree with you. I think you are in compliance with what's required.
And, and I also think that if you actually got to know us, you would, you would learn that we are not the devil in disguise. I'm, I'm exaggerating.
I would disagree with you on that. I made a mistake before when I said eighteen tons of pollutants in this county prior to you coming here. I was corrected.
It's eighteen.
It's eighteen pounds, eighteen pounds, less than my, my cat weighs. And to be honest, hold on one second. Five hundred and fifty pounds of tons is a three million percent increase in this county of pollutants. And so while I agree that you have met the qualifications, you have. It's just simply an industry that we've never had to rely upon, that has never helped us in this county at any point, and we've watched it, most of us deteriorate the west of, the rest of West Virginia, and we don't want it here. That's all I'm simply saying.
Quiet, please. Quiet, or we'll have to clear the chamber.
I would also say that I respect that position, and I can also understand it. However, we as a business also have to look at how are we operating? Are we working as, as expected from the authorities? And then take that into consideration. I would also say that it is probably true, and I don't know, I haven't checked the numbers, that that emission for, for, for Jefferson County is so low, but, but you are surrounded by industries that, that also affects the, the local area here.
Absolutely, I agree. And, you know, I think that kind of completes the initial questions I have. Certainly, I'll reserve my right to chime in if anybody brings anything up. And like I said before, you certainly, I respect the, the fact that you have to come here and you have to defend this, and I respect that, that that is your job. However, it's my job to represent the people at Charlestown, and they don't want you here. And so while you're, you'll do everything in your power to get that plant here, I'll do everything in my power to oppose it.[1776.08]
All right, that's enough. All right, let's have quiet, please. Thank you. All right, does any other member of council have further questions? Councilman Prittingham?
I have none, Mr. Mayor.
All right, well, I'd like to thank you for bringing your team here today to answer our questions. Thank you.
Thanks for having us. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, to you and the rest of the city council, I do apologize from the bottom of my heart. I have clocked 91 hours at my personal job this week and I'm absolutely exhausted. I went to bed at, I got home at 2:30 this morning, woke back up at 6:30 and now I'm here. So I'm going to excuse myself for the rest of the meeting.
Good.
I hope you'll, pardon me.
All right, five minute break. Point, we're going to the public comment of the Rockwell presentation. I know we have over 40 people who would like to speak, so I'm going to ask everyone to try to keep your comments down to a minute, maybe two minutes if you haven't spoke before.
Can we also limit the applause? That eats up a lot of time. I mean, I understand you're all excited, but we have a lot of people to get through and we're trying to hear everybody. And if we can limit the applause, we can listen to a lot more people.
I agree with Mike. If we can do that.
Sounds good.
All right, first speaker Danny Lutz and next up Amanda, is it Burke, Burridge?
And good evening, council members. I'm going to try and speak loudly so everyone can hear because the sound system hasn't been doing that well, especially with the accents of some of the people. I'm Danny Lutz. I am the Conservation District Supervisor for Jefferson County, Eastern Panhandle Conservation District, and I am also a candidate for Congress in November from the second congressional district. That said, I'm going to cut right to the chase because I'm going to go to some ground that hasn't been plowed yet. 21st century, we no longer have the luxury of dumping our waste on someone else and telling them to go pound sand. So I'm going to ask the council if they will request of Rockwell in North America, Roxel, whatever their, or whatever moniker they choose to call, if they will commit in exchange for your support for their water, will they commit to constructing a zero emissions facility? There is funding available through the Department of Energy, Department of the Interior and the EPA to do so and the technology is available. I heard a couple of statements that certain processes cost too much. Now, I did go to the August 25th open house. I spoke for about 45 minutes with Vice President Anderson, President Ogilvy and Vice President Abbott. I have yet to hear a word from any of them and I gave them my questions in letters and hard copy.
Thank you for your comments tonight.
So next up Amanda, is it Burke? Burridge? To Dr.
Sure.
Sean Amos. I was actually number five, 10 feet.
Okay.
Or something like that. Can I ask you not to start the clock till I get this?
Certainly, we'll give you some time.
First of all.
Pass that out for me.
Come here, grab him, chief. I'll take him down, chief, if you want.
All right, Sean Amos and then Ilsa Gregg.
I'm sorry, yeah. If you could, if you guys could look around. I'm so sorry. There were five copies, I'm not sure where they've gone. So you've heard several times from the representatives from Roxwell that they have never had any sort of health complaints. You have also heard that they are doing whatever they have to do by the standards that are set by the local governing bodies. I sit before you a letter. If you look there at the top, and if you just stay with me, please don't flip pages, stay on the front with me. Right there at the top in yellow, it says the Halton Region Health Department. The Halton region is like a county. Halton is their Jefferson County, okay? And this is a letter being written by the director of that health department to the Ministry of the Environment of Ontario. Ontario is like their state, it's their province, right? So this is a letter going from the Jefferson County Director of the Health Department to the West Virginia DEP, as it were. That's what it's like. Go ahead and turn the page. You will see what they say here. Roxel is a significant emitter of sulfur dioxide. According to National Pollution Release Inventory, in 2006, they emitted 365 tons of sulfur dioxide. Now bear that in mind, that's 2006, 365 tons a year. Turn the page. If you look at the next highlighted bit, while the air levels of sulfur dioxide predicted for Roxel alone after the expansion are well below the Ministry of Environment criteria. In other words, what they're saying is they want to expand, right? But the Minister of Health is saying, yeah, what they're doing is going to be well below what the West Virginia DEP would, it sounds familiar, right? It's going to be well below. Go down to the next little level there. The air levels that they would put out will exceed guidelines in six locations in Milton almost 20% of the time. That's in Milton, that's not 35 miles away. That's right there where that plan is. This is their health department person saying that. Turn the page. The next bit that's highlighted, overall, the health effects of that SO2 are going to create what? Breathing problems, respiratory illness, worsening of respiratory and cardiovascular disease. The conclusion of this letter from the Jefferson County Health Department official, conclusion, the Roxel facility has a significant impact on air quality in northern Milton, not somewhere else, right at Milton. It is currently a significant contributor of air emissions in the community. Look at the next page there highlighted. It is expected that air levels of SO2 will exceed those guidelines in at least one neighborhood in Milton 20% of the time. It's a cause of concern. So this is in 2006, okay? And you'll see it signed here by the doctor who is the healthcare professional for the county, right? So in 2006, he's saying that it's going to cause all these problems if these people raise the SO2 levels. Now then, look at the next, look at the next.
Are we doing it on time, Mayor?
Please let me finish this.
15 seconds. Okay.
This is from the Government of Canada. Now, this was in 2006. The local health department told these people that if they increased those SO2 levels, that it was going to exceed limits of the WHO, the World Health Organization. It was still below what is the West Virginia DEP, right? So let's take a look. Government of Canada.
The West Virginia DEP.
It's not, but it's the equivalent, it's analogous. The Milton region is Jefferson County, all right? Now then, that was in 2006. They put out 265 tons. Let's look and see what they did after they were told that it was going to have that effect. 2006, 365 tons. Look what happens. They were warned in 2006 that children and other people's health was going to be affected. What happens to sulfur dioxide over the next 10 years? It goes up 311%. Now I want to ask you if that's a good neighbor. What they'll tell you is, well, that was below the limits we were allowed. Yeah, it sure is, but here's the health director of that county telling them if they do that, that it's going to exceed these limits and kids were going to get sick. What did they do anyway? They went right ahead and did it. Why? Because it was below the allowed levels. They're going to tell you all sorts of things. You've heard that what, someone said, if I smell has come out of a smokestack, will it make me sick? Well, I don't know, he said.
Sir, your time's up. Thank you. Next up, Ilsa Gregg and Daniel Kozera.
In 2012, I participated in an environmental impact study in Centennial, Colorado. And in that impact study, they were required to notify everyone in the radius of the impact. It could be a mile, it could be five miles, and what that impact would be to them. In this case, it was to expand a freeway. Once that two-year process of the environmental impact study was completed and all of the people impacted, the community were notified, we killed that project. And so if there hasn't been an environmental impact study done, I don't know why, because I think that's standard.
Thank you.
Daniel Kozera and then David Pratt or Prate?
Good evening. I came here with a whole lot else on my mind, but I'm going to try to get this to one minute. And what I wanted to talk about was legacy. I'm getting to the point in my age where I've got to start thinking about legacy. And each of you, I think, are at a point where you have to think about shaping your legacy. I ask you, what is your legacy going to be? It's going to be that you ignored the concerns of 10,000 people? Or that you listened and realized the value of their ideas and involvement? Will it be that you went along with decisions made secretly, imperfect and self-serving? Or that you saw that mistakes were made and you made the choice to make those wrong mistakes right? Will it be that you put the well-being of children and others at risk of living in an environment of pollution and toxic chemicals? Or that you made sure that what you leave to the future generations is as good or better than you have it? We, 10,000 of us, have taken a stand. We've determined what we want our legacy to be. We ask you, the children ask you, future generations ask you, what will your legacy be? Thank you.
Thank you.
David Prate and then John Taylor.
It's Pratt. And I was going to talk about legacy too, because sometimes you're put in a position where you can do the right thing. This is the bottom-line decision. You guys are a linchpin on this. You have the power to stop this. We live in a time of political arrogance and I think the ransom city council, the secret dealings that went on, is ultimate arrogance if you're going to ignore thousands of citizens. I come from Clark County up here. I live on a 400-acre farm. We raise grass-fed beef and pigs and eggs. Forty of those acres extended to Jefferson. My wife owns a townhouse across from the Panera. She was looking to buy two more rental properties and she stopped that search. Her realtor said there were 10 townhouses all in a row for sale up there. Ask yourself why that is. This is the wrong decision for this area. My friends, I'm politically active in Virginia, I contacted Senator Kane. Tonight, Loudoun County is going to put out a statement. Clark is upset. Frederick County, I represent a grassroots group of 700 people. I paint signs out here because I thought it mattered. We are all upset. Your responsibility extends to the region. Now that you can make that decision and weather a little bit of pressure. But then they'll go away. They will go away and they will build somewhere else.
Thank you.
Next up, John Taylor and then Hannah.
Thank you. We moved here six months ago from the DC area because we wanted clean air, nice. Fallen in love with the area and living in the countryside. We tried to find every information out that we could and nothing came up six, eight months ago when we were looking for a house. What this reminded, because it was very quiet, and what this reminds me of, and I'm going to draw a little analogy here. 10 years ago, a multinational company tried to go into El Salvador to mine gold, which is billions of dollars underground. They came in with the same promises that I'm hearing tonight, that it would be very clean. I've met the CEO of Pacific Rim, who was the mining company there. When the citizens got ahold of that, and this is mostly rural people, not a lot of resources and everything, they didn't have near the support that's over here that's against this factory coming in here, and they were able to stop it.
Your time's up, thank you.
Okay, with the resources we have, I think we can pretty well stop it. Pacific Rim spent $78 million and had to walk away.
So Hannah from Charlestown and Bruce Frye.
Hi, I'm Hannah. Thank you for having me. I'm a mom of a two-and-a-half-year-old Hazel and my son, who's one, Arthur. Watched a movie with them last night and this inspired this. Unless, unless Rockwell is stopped, we will all be victim to unalterable change to our way of life. Vote no on the water bond, vote no on the sewer. Unless the voices and efforts of 10,000-plus individuals representing families is insignificant to you, help us. Vote no on the water bond and sewer. Unless forever altering the natural landscape and beauty of the eastern panhandle and replacing it with 21-story smokestacks is a good fit for tourism and growth, vote no. Unless you're comfortable sending 30% of Jefferson County's children to schools within two miles of heavy industry and gambling on their future health, please do all you can to vote no. Unless you can look my daughter Hazel and my son Arthur in their eyes years from now and honestly say that a factory was worth more than their safety, please vote no. In the words of Dr. Seuss, unless you care, I'm sorry, unless someone you like cares a whole awful lot, nothing is going to get better. It's not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bruce Frye and Sharon Wilt. Bruce Frye and then Sharon Wilt.
I'm actually getting my time to.
Okay. All right. So next up, Tim Allen and Sherry Hunter.
Okay, so I'm Sherry Hunter and I didn't originally plan to talk. I thought we came in like everybody signed in, so, but I'm actually glad that I'm getting the opportunity. Several years ago, I was involuntarily exposed to chemicals in my workplace. We reported smells, people feeling sick, companies were coming in, you know, EPA, we had OSHA, we had NIOSH. They were like, oh, the levels, you know, it's formaldehyde, all these different chemicals were safe levels, safe. So what they weren't taking into account is that all these different chemicals, if you put them together, you don't know what kind of toxic soup you're going to get. You can't do studies on humans or animals with these chemicals because it's unethical, it's unsafe. And so as a result of that, I have a lot of now medical problems that I never had before. I have brief reactive airway disease. I have cognitive problems, all kinds of issues. So please, just because they say, oh, it's safe, again, we don't know like long-term what these things might do and when they're mixed together, do they have a cumulative effect or what exactly they do? So please, get them out of here.
Next up, Gregory O'Connor. Gregory O'Connor and then is it Roy Cohen?
Thank you. My name is Gregory O'Connor and I'm the father of a six-year-old and eight-year-old that are going to be going to school at the foot of those stacks for 11 years. I think the emotional appeals aside, the facts state basically 33 pounds a day of sulfur dioxide comes out to, what, close to 300 tons a year of that alone? The studies have shown that it is going to have a negative effect. The pollutants are being expelled into the atmosphere. Depending on the weather conditions, they will settle because they are heavier than air. And our children will be put at some sort of disadvantage, point blank. There is no getting around that. And I, as a parent, moved to Jefferson County to recover from colon cancer and now I'm putting my kids in the path of something that's potentially is deadly. So, and I wasn't given a choice. I wasn't even asked if it mattered. The choice was made for me, I feel like. So that's just something to think about. You talk about leaving a lasting impression, that will leave an impression.
Thank you.
Roy Cohen from Herpers Ferry? Sorry about that. George or Gabby George?
Hi. I just think from an economic perspective, you don't offer any value to this community at all. Property is going to go down. People who are living less than a block away from, or what was it, a quarter mile from where you're going to be building, their values are going to go down. You aren't paying taxes and I don't see how you're going to be a good neighbor if you're not going to help our schools and give us a tax basis. Those 150 jobs could be coming from Maryland, those workers, not here in Jefferson County. That's all I have to say. Think about the economics in the long run.
Thank you.
Kevin Hall and Diane Blust.
Thank you. This factory has been compared to Valhalla, Mississippi, and I just want to give you a visual here. So Jefferson County, 212 square miles, population about 56,500. Ransom, West Virginia, population about 5,000. This is the size of Marshall County in Mississippi in comparison to scale. So they have 710 square miles compared to our 212, a population of 37,000, so a little bit less than half. And Valhalla, Mississippi, has a population of 1,300. So this factory does not belong in this county. It needs to go someplace. It needs to go someplace else. So that's our square footage, according to those. So my name's Kevin Hall. I've been a resident of Jefferson County since 1976. I didn't purchase my retirement home in the last two years with a factory in the backyard. So don't underestimate your influence on this project. Talk to your constituents. Talk and have your JCDAs rep vote no on the water bond on the third reading. It isn't right for this county. It doesn't belong here. Issue a public resolution that you do not support this. Come out with any public statement to stop this. Don't be afraid. You have lots of citizens behind you.
Thank you.
Diane Blust and Teri Fielamire.
Hi, good evening. My name is Diane Blust. Mayor Rogers, I want to thank you for your stand on the plant. I also want to ask you all to instruct your JCDAs rep to vote no on the water bond. There was a question about water usage. I believe it's one of the MOUs with Ranson. The water usage can be up to 500,000 gallons a day. I called JUI today to see if they had done a hydrologic study, and no one will call me back. Also, please vote no on the sewer bond. And on the economic impact of this, this is a foreign company. I love foreign companies. I have a lot of foreign stuff, but the profits are going to Denmark. It's wonderful that you have a charitable wing. That's great. The profits are not staying here in Jefferson County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Teri Fielamire, and then Gail Colhurst.
I've got a little handout, so don't start your timer. Just, I'll hand it out for you. Want to help? Yeah, I'll do it. What you're going to find here is a conversion. What the EPA and Rockwell normally do, because they want numbers to be small, is they talk about tons per year and what have you. What I've done is some elementary math here that converts in pounds per day from tons per year, which is a little more reliable. I'm going to read just a couple, three of them. Nitrogen oxides, 1,357 pounds a day. Carbon monoxide, 420 pounds a day. Carbon dioxide, 869,931 pounds a day. Hazardous air pollution, 2232 pounds a day. And embalming fluid, I mean formaldehyde, 384 pounds a day. And that's a total of 3 million pounds a year from toxic waste from this plant. Now, we've all heard the Rockwell folks tell you that, you know, nothing that they put into your sewage treatment plant is going to be bad, that the only water coming out of there is out of water closets and sinks and what have you. Well, that's a lot of water closet flushing for 26,000 gallons a day. And what they want to do is also tell you...
Four seconds.
Okay. What, thank you. What they want to do is, they have not told you what the waste stream is going into your treatment plant, what the pH, what the chemical compounds are. If this creates a toxic solution at your treatment plant, all the outflows, sludge and what have you, will have to be trucked to a hazardous waste site. In essence, any discharge from your wastewater plant must be treated as hazardous. I don't think you have that kind of money in the budget to do all that kind of work. And we haven't heard to the contrary, the only option is not to build the plant and deny, or deny them access to the sewer. One thing that was stated is that we have not had any input to them. And the reason that most of us have not talked to them is because we don't want this plant here. We don't care that they're going to have three centimeters per square of non-toxics or that they're below the limit. The problem is, we don't want them. This zone was never for heavy industrial plant. It was for light commercial, and we're not getting that. So I advise you and urge you to do not provide a sewer up that end of the county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gail Colhurst, and then Karen Glennon.
Hi, my name's Gail Colhurst, and I think I've written each of you a personal email, so I hope you've gotten it and read it. My husband and I moved here in 2003 as a retirement move, and we loved it so much, we encouraged our daughter and her family to move up. And I have two grandchildren in the Jefferson County school system. I'm very, very concerned about the Rockwell plant being built here. It's probably going to make me move. And I'm kind of old. I've invested a lot of time here, and I don't want to have to move. I'd like to ask each of you to be a hero tonight. You have a chance to really help our community. And I know there's big stakes, and I know it takes a lot of courage, but I'm asking you, and I'm pleading with you, to vote no on the sewer bond, to write a resolution saying that you do not support building the Rockwell plant here. You are our best hope, and I thank the mayor for already standing up for us. And there are a lot of people who feel exactly like I do. This beautiful brochure, "Welcome to Jefferson County." Do we want to see Rockwell on one of these pages? Charlestown's the very first place to be mentioned, and Harpers Ferry and Shepherdstown. And we have a beautiful community. Let's not spoil it.
Thank you for your comments.
Karen Glennon, and then Dana Anders.
Thank you. I'd like to read to you from the pilot agreement. This was signed by the county commission, the city of Ranson, the school board. I understand you're not a signatory to it, but I'd like you to read, hear this. "The commission has found and hereby finds that the agreements herein contained and the consummation of the transactions in connection herewith will, will promote the public interest and public purposes by, among other things, providing certainty and soundness in physical planning and promoting the present and prospective prosperity, health, happiness, safety, and general welfare of the people of Jefferson County." I would tell you, this is not happiness. This is not health. This isn't guarantee safety. This doesn't guarantee prosperity, and we are not convinced of the physical soundness of this plan with the direction that this project will lead our community in. So I would urge you to do your part to cease this project. Thank you.
Dana Anders, and then Sammy Brown. Dana Anders. All right, Sammy Brown, and then Kirsten Lee.
First off, thank you to the council and then for the building commission for having us here today. Citizens Against Rockwell, thank you for your mad organizing here in the past few months. I'm Sammy Brown. I will say that I'm coming from a labor perspective in this particular statement. I am the vice president of our central labor council. I represent folks that are pipe fitters, coal miners, steel workers, construction trades. And one of the biggest concerns that I heard, particularly in that presentation, was that there was no plan in order to make sure that West Virginia workers are getting West Virginia jobs. I've advocated for seven out of 10 of every populace to make sure that those are the individuals getting the jobs, and that was never articulated. But what's more concerning to me than that was the fact that what was posed to you as a company, would you be willing to make concessions or would you be willing to move, knowing that the community did not want you here? And you flat said no. I'm pretty much baffled by that. And that being said, this community is an anti-industry, and we are an anti-trade, but we are saying to one another that we care about you, our families, our environmental protections, our well-being, and we will take that every time over corporate interests. Unless you are willing to invest in communities, and unless you are willing to put West Virginians to work, you can't be here. You are not the right industry for West Virginia or my hometown of Charlestown and my home community of Jefferson County. I will keep this statement brief because, quite frankly, I want the community to speak more than I ever do, but it is very clear to me that Jefferson County got a raw deal in this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kirsten Lee and Donna Westbrook.
I'm Kirsten Lee. Y'all are teaching us to read faster and faster and faster. Water is a big question, and it's coming up for a vote. We still don't know how pulling 100,000 gallons of water every day will affect existing residents, wells, and aquifer levels. We don't know how it will affect our karst geology and the face of their land through new and expanding sinkholes. When we asked him, Ogilvy had not even heard of the term karst geology. But let's turn closer to home. One of the people we elected to make decisions that will forever shape our county said in an official recording from the Ranson Planning Commission meeting on July 10, 2017. I think by the time this project is over, you're going to have people who are against the gas line coming in here, and you're going to have people that are very concerned about the environmental air permit. The more openings that there are to discretion, the more opportunity there is for a challenge. So we increased the buy rate. There's no discretion anymore, so they, Rockwell, can come in to get the building permit, check the box, and go on with life. Otherwise, I'm going to have the public in here saying, why should you be the one to decide? We compromise here, so you, Rockwell, don't have to go through a public discretionary labor process. Elected officials are on record editing laws and strategizing to deliberately bamboozle Jefferson County residents for the benefit of a foreign corporation. Listen to it for yourselves. How does something that requires fleecing Jefferson County residents jive with good governance in Charlestown's vision? I urge you to vote no on the sewer bond, urge Mr. Hennessy to vote no on the water bond, and to stand with Harpers Ferry in issuing a resolution opposing Rockwell.
Thank you.
Donna Westbrook, and then is it Nicola?
Hi, I'm Donna Westbrook. We moved here last year from out of the area. We moved from southern Maryland, where we found out we were near a Superfund site. I have family in Pennsylvania, where they lived near a plant that burned coal slag that the scrubbers failed twice, and the pollutants that were spewed that were never supposed to be spewed were spewed out of the factory's smokestacks that were high in the air. Kids and adults lost their hair, their fingernails, their toenails. I think it's important to think twice. The pollutants that they're taking out of the water and the pollutants that they're taking out of the coal slag or the basalt or the volcanic ash or whatever they're going to use this week, because we keep hearing different stories, the rock has toxins in it. Where are those toxins going to go? It's not going into the mist that they're putting out of their vapor stacks, and it's not going out of the water into the sewers. So are they going to have a sludge pond? Are they going to, do they have a magic wand? I mean, we're not getting all the answers.
Ten more seconds.
We're not getting answers about where this is going. Volcanic rock has toxins in it. Coal slag has toxins in it. Basalt has toxins in it. Where are the toxins going? Nobody's answering that question.
All right. Thank you for your comments.
After Nicola, it's Lynn Wagner.
Nicola Bastian from Millville, West Virginia. I live next to a quarry. It's just rock. And I'm up on my roof cleaning out the gutters because of the dust quite often. So I'm sensitive to quarries. So when the question came up about where does the basalt come from, that is my question. There, it is a quarry in somebody else's backyard. Or how is the basalt being brought into this community? And for me, to imagine that a company like that doesn't know yet where it is coming from is hard to imagine. How can they know what chemicals they're getting if they don't even know where the basalt is coming from? And the same with the coal. Maybe that after a while, we are going to be told, well, we didn't know that the coal was so contaminated, so it's going to take us a while to take the extra contamination out of the basalt and the coal that we are getting. And yeah, we don't need quarries in other people's communities either.
Thank you.
Lynn Wagner, and then Lee Smith.
Hi, I'm speaking for Lynn Wagner. My name is Artif Gilbertson, and I'm, okay. I'm a nurse with the Jefferson County Health Department and with the community ministries here. I'm a wife, a mother, a grandmother. We do not need to build a water facility to run water to this facility. We need water to drink. West Virginia seems to be a magnet for many things, it seems, like Mississippi. Corporate conflicts of interest seem to be par for the course these days, but that does not make it right or fair. So we say no. North Jefferson, Fox Glen, I've been there, in the schools, they're poor, they're distressed, like Mississippi, like West Virginia. Not a surprise. At the least, an eyesore, out of place in our beautiful county. We are good neighbors who want other truly good neighbors. Noise and smell, mm-mm, and the potential of health risks and eyesores, costs, water requirements. I know you want to be our neighbor, and I can't blame you there. But perhaps before you invested and excluded other neighbors, you would have done your homework better. It just seems like it's not a good fit for us. If you indeed are a benevolent corporate charity entity, then I am certain you can find a place that wants your benevolent neighborliness.
Ten seconds.
Please hear us. When we say no, thank you.
Lee Smith and Bob Gillette.
Hi, my name is Lee Smith. I help to run the Concerned Citizens Against Rockwell group. We went over 10,000 members today. We're growing at a clip of about 100 members a day. That isn't an indication of how this county feels. I don't know what is. There are four meetings tonight, and I just want to point that out because there would be an even bigger crowd here. There's a Loudoun County supervisors' meeting, there's a Bolivar City Council meeting, and Ranson. So we are spread out over four meetings tonight. There would be more people here. There is no amount of cherry-picked information Rockwell can feed us that will convince us to welcome them to our home. And I encourage the council to do their due diligence, researching what they've told you tonight, because clearly they are here for one reason, and that's to build this plant. They're going to say what they need to say and pick out the information they need to pick out to build this plant. That is their job. They're being paid well for it. We're taking time away from our families to try to protect our home. The school board asked Rockwell to stop construction until studies were completed. They refused. That's not being a very good neighbor. I encourage the council to, you know, do their due diligence, research on your own, and to vote no on the sewer bond. I encourage Mr. Hennessy to vote no on the water bond and to issue a resolution of, you know, that you don't agree with building Rockwell. Please vote no, and we will have your backs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob Gillette, and then Allison Osborne.
Good evening. I'm Bob Gillette. I've been in Jefferson County 34 years, worked in Washington, commuted for 33 of them, retired last year, and luckily I have a second job, and it's coming to every meeting you guys have. Speaking of which, I have been to every meeting. And first off, I've got to give you guys credit, because this is the first time you and the other members asked actual questions with Dianne. I've been, Ranson, I don't know where the JCDAs, they don't seem to want to talk to anybody, but Ranson, who is in, I understand, the lead position on this because of Home Rule and other things, fast-tracking, had no facts. So good for you guys. Good for you guys. And I have a suggestion. I hear a lot of, I don't want to say ignorance, but there's a lot of facts that just aren't known. But this whole thing's been approved already. You're turning shovels now. You know, is it 550,000 gallons or is it 60 gallons? Is it, I mean, it's one fact after another. What I think is that process that was changed about a year ago, I think, needs to be a joint, everyone needs to look at it in terms of our elected officials. How are we going to do a better job bringing industry in here? I don't, Rockwell, I sympathize that, you know, they went into the wild, wild west, I think. They just, who do I talk to? Ran over there, probably got the right green mark.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up.
Let's fix the broken process.
Allison Osborne, and then Rick Osborne.
Can I take this time?
Go right ahead.
My name is Dana Anders, and I live on 148 Ridge Road, about two miles from the proposed Rockwell factory. I have lived on this property for 33 years, and it has been in my family for 65 years. In my yard are my grandmother's peonies, lilacs and hostas. She lived on Luther Jones Road near Will Sutherland's home for almost 100 years. My husband and I are career teachers, and our somewhat limited income and our time have been spent on and in local communities. We attend and take active roles in our churches and our civic organizations. We attend and belong to Shepherd University organizations. We eat in local restaurants and buy organic products produced in Jefferson County. We also run and walk on the Route 9 bypass, at least for now. Our home does not have central air. We will not only breathe possible pollutants while working in our yard and sitting on our deck, but we will have them in our home as well. If we received notification from Rockwell, it was not sent certified mail, and it did not contain any of the information that has been presented at these meetings. Several of our friends have become snowbirds. They have kept their homes and community ties, but left the area for a short time in the winter. We fully intended to do this as well. We are now in the process of getting a current market analysis on our home and do not plan to stay in the area if Rockwell comes to fruition. Our vision, as well as many of our friends' golden years' vision, did not and does not include Eric Lewis's or Duke Pearson's vision of an industrial Jefferson County, light or heavy. It includes raising our grandchildren in a country and a county where we enjoy hiking, kayaking, biking, boating, and other activities. It seems that many public officials have not given any thought to the ghost town that Jefferson County might become. We simply are not interested in living in an industrialized Jefferson County.
Thank you, ma'am. Your time is up.
And though, as my son mentioned when he spoke here two weeks ago, I would not have allowed him to stay at North Jefferson School with childhood asthma if the Rockwell plant had been built in its current proposed location.
Thank you.
Gina Bellin. Gina?
Can Sean speak for me? I think he has more to say.
I think we've heard from Sean. Gina, you're up next. And then Mary Brittingham.
Well, Mary's already left, so somebody can figure out who's taking that one. I just want to thank you guys for listening to us today. We have a lot of concerns. I live a mile and a half away, and if these people would wanted to be a friendly neighbor and be transparent, then they would have reached out to us before all of this. And everything's just been hidden under the table, and now all we can do is beg you to please stop this. The Board of Education very nicely asked them three times, "Please stop until we can get more information." But they just, nope, just keep right on going, because they have no intentions of stopping. I hear they're going to buy more property and build another factory. I mean, how many of us do you want us to leave before you decide that, you know, that this isn't good for our county? And I've been here for 45 years, and I turned 62 last year. I was really planning on retiring. I really was. I put my 20 years in at FEMA, and I really wanted to spend more time with my grandchildren. But I can't grow food in my yard in a mile and a half away. I can't do anything in my yard. So, I mean, it's just time to go. And I don't have central air either, so, I mean, the windows at night, that's just history. So please, I beg of you, think about the people that have been here and that support your community. We want a healthy community like we've had, and we have people that care like that. So I thank you, and I don't want to...
Thank you.
Emmett Fremont, and then Morgan Sell.
Good evening. I'm Emmett Fremont. I live up in Shanadale, technically in Harpers Ferry. I retired here six years ago for all the same reasons that everybody you've heard from tonight lives here, because of the beauty, the air, the industry-free environment, and a place to enjoy for all those reasons. I spent 29 years in DC. I've worked for corporations. I've never seen a debacle quite like this. This really is a classic. It is a total debacle. These guys over here are going to have to be actually driven out of this community. And if you guys and your other counterparts and these other councils don't realize that, then you're going to go too, because this community is not going to stand for this. This is an ugly, unnecessary, misguided debacle that has been born of corporate greed, of nondisclosure agreements, and signing off on something before the facts are known. And the only thing can happen is the Sewer Board and the Water Board can deny the permits, and this outlet can be tied up in litigation. If that's what it takes, that what it takes. But I give you guys credit, because I've been to every one of the bodies that has met to this point, and no one has ever opened its mouth to ask them a question or become engaged in the discussion. So I see a big change happening. And it's signaled by, just a few days ago, Harpers Ferry came out and resolved against this proposal. Obviously, it's completely inconsistent with their comprehensive plan. It's inconsistent with our quality of life, our economy, everything that's already here.
Thank you for your comments tonight.
Please undo it.
Morgan?
Good evening.
Are you Morgan?
Yes.
Morgan, and then Katie.
Morgan is a boy and girl name. All right. Dear council members, and I meant that with love, okay. Dear council members, thank you so much for having us again. My name is Morgan Sell, and I'm a 28-year resident of Shepherdstown and mother of two boys, ages five and one. I do sympathize with the position that you're in right now. As the public and I begin to ask you to please vote no on the sewer bond, I honor your leadership as you direct your JCD representative, Daryl Hennessy, city manager of Charlestown, to vote no on the water bond on September 18th, 2018. Thank you. I urge you to issue a resolution opposing the building of the Rockwell plant, just like your neighbors of Harpers Ferry and soon-to-be Shepherdstown as well. The Jefferson County Board of Education explained that when they met with the JCDAs, they were given a mostly financial presentation. The presentation did not include the full scope of the development project, nor did it include any mention of one or two smokestacks. Now, I am genuinely curious. Was this your impression also from the presentation that was given to you by the JCDAs? Did you receive a comprehensive explanation of the development in which they intended to file permits for, smokestacks included? Or did you receive also a mostly financial presentation for Rockwell from the JCDAs? Knowing what you know now of the scope of the construction and the risks to our public health, especially to children, elderly, and asthmatics, can you in good conscience make argument that this is a good move for our county? What we are witnessing today is history in Jefferson County. Never before have we allowed heavy industry into this land. What we are also witnessing is the precipice of what could be the death of a community. Your farmers' markets, your murals, and your hard work to improve this community would be wasted. I ask you to ask Rockwell if they have installed any monitors on the schools in Milton, Ontario, and what about in Bahalia, Mississippi? What is their stance on adding monitors to their schools that are already next to the operating Rockwell facilities? What is their stance on protecting our children?
Ma'am, your time is up. Thank you for speaking.
Next up, Katie.
Has asthma.
Katie Meekstrath. Katie?
Step on up.
Right ahead.
Okay. I will tell you that there's... My son, who is five, has asthma. I will tell you that there is nothing scarier than watching your child have trouble breathing. I will tell you that, or Rockwell will tell you that we breathe out formaldehyde, and they will tell you that the amount of formaldehyde at the nearest schoolyard will only be a fraction of the amount that we are breathing out every day. JCDAs will tell you that there is nothing that you all can do. What we need now is your political courage, because what you have from us is our public support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Melissa Hines. Melissa Hines, and then Richard Krasner.
I have a handout. I prepared an 11-page letter that he's handing out right now. Tell me when my time is started.
All right, you're starting now.
Do you know what 400 acres looks like? Jefferson Orchard is 400 acres. Hood College, 50 acres. Clarksburg Outlets, 50 acres. Cottonton Zoo, 25 acres. MGA National Harbor, 23 acres. Mayweather Post Pavilion, 40 acres. National Laboratory for Cancer Research, 70 acres. Wells Fargo Home Mortgage, 39 acres. That's a total of 297 acres and 8,000 jobs and endless supply of visitors, plus another 100 acres for 600 homes. This project goes against your comprehensive plan that says you need homes, jobs, and tourism amenities to boost the economy of this downtown. Your comprehensive plan said you want to reduce brownfields. You're creating a brownfield. Your comprehensive plan says you want to create a downtown that is connected to the Mark train station, and that development depends on the North Point train station, which needs a high-quality mixed-use development that provides the density and the investment that is needed to pay for the $16 million project that the Hagerstown Eastern Panhandle Planning Commission supports in this year's transportation plan. And finally, your own comprehensive plan states that Charlestown can take action to ensure its soil, land, water, wilderness, and air, that they are protected for future generations, and that you want to increase your livability score by improvements to your clean air and water that will increase Charlestown's livability, vibrancy, and sustainability. So tell me how this project meets your comprehensive plan goals.
With all due respect, this plant is being built in the city of Ranson, not in the city of Charlestown. I understand your concern.
Your water...
But I'm not going to be argued with if this is not our problem.
Tell me why Ranson and Charlestown are having a joint planning department to conserve money and resources. Your comprehensive plan states... Your comprehensive plan states the word Ranson 144 times. Tell me how Ranson's not part of Charlestown. Tell me.
All right, ma'am. Thank you. Let's continue. You have 20 more seconds if you'd like.
All I wanted to say is that I think that you were trying to conserve resources by joining Ranson and Charlestown, which is supposed to be a good idea. It's supposed to be a model community for this country. The EPA, the DOT, the HUD, all gave you money to make this incredible comprehensive plan to build this vital community, the joining of two cities, to build a better Jefferson County, and you're killing it. You're killing it. Land is precious. Water is precious. 400 acres just don't come around all the time. Shepherdstown is 350 acres. You could build Shepherdstown on the 400 acres that are not going to be eaten by one user and 150 jobs. Tell me, is that what you want for the future of Charlestown?
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Richard Krasner. I'm a meteorologist. First, I want to start off with saying if you build it, they will come. You bring the sewer, you bring the water, you bring the gas, and we won't be worried about Rockwell, worried about the other Rockwells. Each company that comes in can go above the EPA limit, but you combine them all together, you're going to go above the EPA limit. And by the way, I got great news for Loudoun County, because on days when we have an inversion, that pollution won't make it there. It'll stay here. And on days when we don't have inversions, it's going to go down to Loudoun County, and it won't be good for them. What else I want to say? When we talk about science, there's a science of facts and how they're presented. Rockwell provides misinformation. Rockwell leaves out facts. You mean example of jobs? 150 jobs, we've all heard that. $17 an hour for jobs. 63,000 median wage. Do you all know what median means? Means half above and half below. So 75, based on the facts that I have, 75 of those jobs will be below 63,000. I don't know how much below, because median doesn't calculate the dollar amount, it just says below. So I have to assume that 75 of those jobs will be $17 an hour. Heck, I can go to Walmart and probably get a $17 an hour job there and not be affected by anything that happens in a factory. This is, as I said last time I spoke, this is insane to bring this kind of industry into this county.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up.
David Pugh. David Pugh and Kendra Clark.
Good evening. I'm Dave Pugh. I have lived in Jefferson County for over 40 years, and I feel threatened by the proposed Rockwell project. I'd like to quote to you, basing my persuasive argument on the incompatibility of this, from the Jefferson County Development Authority mission statement on their website. Quote, "The ultimate goal of the Jefferson County Development Authority is to improve the quality of life for all Jefferson County residents. The Rockwell Heavy Industry Project will pollute, not improve, the quality of the air residents breathe in Jefferson County. The Rockwell Project will deplete, not improve, the water resources in Jefferson County. The Rockwell Project will worsen, not improve, traffic safety for residents of Jefferson County. The Rockwell Project will harm, not improve, the existing tourism and agriculture business in Jefferson County." And the website indicates that the tourism industry is a billion-dollar industry for Jefferson County. Why would we want to harm that? "The Rockwell Project is a threat to the quality of life for all Jefferson County residents. The Rockwell Heavy Industrial Project is a violation of the fundamental mission of the Jefferson County Development Authority. To this point, the process has failed the residents of Jefferson County. So I ask you to please vote no on the sewer bond and direct the representative on the Development Authority to vote no on the water bond." Thank you.
Kendra Clark. And then Craig Snyder.
I've lived in Jefferson County for 22 years, and I teach in a nearby elementary school. This Rockwell debacle was conducted in such an underhanded and deceitful way with code names, closed doors, nondisclosure agreements, and then the JCDAs, Ranson City Council, and Rockwell pat themselves on the back for keeping it under wraps and evading a mailstorm of public outcry. We'll hear the outcry now. And Rockwell, do not tell me that we are blowing this out of proportion. How exactly does one blow 155,000-plus tons of yearly toxins out of proportion? For every ton of poison spewing out of those stacks, there is scientific, factual research information on why it is so very harmful to humans and animals and plants. How these toxins kill, how they sicken... And it sickens me the way that elected officials welcome corporations into West Virginia to rape and pillage our mountains, our air, our streams, and rivers, and they leave our communities and our towns destroyed, devastated, and in despair while they leave with millions in revenue. And if anyone thinks 150 jobs is a good selling point, the loss of jobs in this county and beyond will be far, far greater than 150 jobs in tourism, farming, apiaries. And stop and think about why generations of farm families stay in this area and why residents move here. They move here and stay here for the quality of life they find in Jefferson County, the very thing that Rockwell is so intent on destroying. Mr. Mayor and the Charlestown City Council members, I hope you will say no to Rockwell and do what is in the best interest of this community. Vote no. Otherwise, when you go home tonight, stick your head out a window and take in the beauty of this place, close your eyes, and smell the honeysuckle after a summer rain, and take a long, deep breath and enjoy it while you still can.
And then Megan Flynn.
Come on up.
Okay, thank you for your time. My name is Michael, and I live in Ranson. I was at that council meeting earlier. I'm against this plant and heavy industry in Jefferson County. I live in Briar Run. Vote no in any future situations that will promote the building of Rockwell or heavy industry. This is a bipartisan effort. We will all be impacted negatively. Don't forget, Rockwell is advertising to you when they are presenting why they would want to, when they are presenting to you in slides and other media. Why would they want to present any negative facts that would show them in a negative light? Have you ever seen an infomercial or QVC advertisement that talks about the faults of the product or production or reviews? Pay attention to the information from Rockwell. Don't be afraid to ask questions. A lot of their slides and remarks don't show all the facts. Words and numbers are chosen carefully. Some of the info doesn't make sense. I respectfully asked questions on their Facebook page and have been blocked on the Ranson Community page. I went to their open house. The slides have ambiguous data with sites from ERM, an environmental consulting group, which appears to be a science-for-hire firm that helps oil and gas, pharmaceutical, coal, and other companies navigate dialogue, and their own words, "social, ethical pressures," among other things. Sounds fishy to me. Google ERM. I don't trust Rockwell to do anything other than make money. They don't care about West Virginia, the county, or impact. I don't trust the Ranson City Council, the WEP...
Thank you. Megan Flynn, or Reed Flynn.
My name's Megan. Thank you very much for affording us the opportunity to speak. My, thank you. My husband and I are not from Jefferson County, but we got here as soon as we could. I'm from the Chemical Valley. I'm from Charleston. He's from Parkersburg, which has the highest rate of cancer among males in America. I don't know if you've ever been down there, but if you're from the Chemical Valley, this place has been like a, like a dream. People talk about the beauty and the wealth, and it's like a magical place. And we overcame poverty. We overcame so much to get here. We, we got our degrees. We found this place. We bought our first home two years ago. It's a dream home. But there is nothing that I love more in this room than that man and maybe our 50-years future together. I don't trust them with that. I trust my friends. I trust the doctor. I trust the nurse who spoke, and I still have trust. I do still have trust in this council. I don't envy the position you're in in some ways, because it's got to be hard. This is a lot. But you still have an opportunity to do something heroic, and we do support you, and I will be forever grateful. And if you can not let them in, we will stay. We will stay. Thank you.
Thank you. Final speaker on the list is Reed Flynn.
Good evening. Thank you for this time. I know you had to sit through some really clever stuff that the Rockwell people told you earlier. I'm just going to give my point of view here. I'm a Jefferson County resident, and I would like to express my concern about the heavy industrial insulation plant that is proposed in the neighboring town of Ranson. As you can imagine, I'm very distressed by the negative impacts that this development will be, will be caused by this unnecessary project. The air pollution, heavy traffic, reduced property values, permanent scarring of the pastoral view shed, and water table depletion that will occur from this plant are simply not welcome in this county. For every one person that you find in favor of this proposal, I can assure you there are at least 10 that are opposed. From what I understand, this project completion is thankfully not guaranteed as of now. Here's where you all come in. You have the opportunity to show the community that you have the political courage and integrity to do what's right. Remember that you work for your constituents, not for outside corporations. So do what's right by the citizens that you were hired to represent. You can do the following things. Direct the Charles Town City Representative of the Jefferson County Development Authority to vote no on the upcoming water bond on September 18th. Use your position as an accountable elected public servant to vote no on the sewer bond to be decided by October 1st, and publicly as a body resolve to oppose the construction of the proposed Rockwell plant like your neighboring communities have done. There you go. It's simple. As residents of this community yourselves, I am 100% sure that you want what's best for the citizens. These actions that you can do will go a long way to ensuring that our community remains a beautiful, vibrant home that it currently is, and I would hate to be forced to move from my place that my family, my wife and I, who just spoke, calls home. If this project goes forward, that will be the unfortunate decision that we will be forced to make. As long as you understand your responsibility to your community as opposed-
Thank you, sir. Your time is up.
Thank you for your time.
Hold on. Hold on. Mayor, can we open it up for more people to speak?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to talk right off the top.
Say your name so I can get it down.
Sharon Will.
Oh, Sharon, okay.
And I gave up my time earlier to Sean Amos so he could speak. I'm probably the closest person to the potential Rockwell plant. I live in Fox Glen. That little community that everybody's forgotten about. You said that earlier, the school. Now, they're going to bring in a three-turn lane for Rockwell. The state is footing that bill. Has anybody ever been out to see school come in or let out at North Jefferson? It's a massive mess, but the state's never offered up any turn lanes for them. My biggest concern, though, is the water and the sewer. If they need 125,000 gallons of water minimum per day, and if they would build another plant to build silting tiles, and that would go up to that 500,000 gallons of water per day, where is JUI going to pull it from? All the underground caverns that connect right next door to the land that they're going to supposedly build on are three pristine quarries that have the prettiest blue water in them, that if you went over there and looked, you would think you were in Tahiti somewhere. Has anybody taken the time to do an underground study? When they start to pull that water, what's it going to do to the rest of us? At the school board, they told the school board, well, you can pay a tap fee and hook onto the water that Lee Snyder's going to bring up the road. And in order to get your money back quicker, you could become what they call a developer, and you can start charging tap fees to other people to tap on and recoup your monies quicker. Well, I'm sorry, the people of Fox Glen do not have money to hook onto any water, sewer, or anything else. No, the water's not the best. The water's not the best, but I'll keep it.
Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
Your water and sewer, who provides that? Do you, do you have a box plant in?
Marcus Enterprises. There's approximately four wells there for the development. There's a water tower if the water runs down, and the water's not the best. Every property in there has their own septic system.
There's what, 400?
Approximately.
400?
We were on a baseline of $24, because that's what our water was. Recently, they've doubled that. We're at $48. My husband and I both are on fixed incomes. My husband has onset ALS. So if this plant comes and that sulfur comes in the air, those chemicals come in the air, I won't be able to take him outside, more or less drink the daggone water.
So there's, so there's 400 septic systems?
Approximately, yes. And it's sustained, my mother was one of the first people that ever built out there, and it's been over 40 years. And you know, if you come in with the water, the pipes are that old. Who's going to replace those pipes? I can't replace them. I'm on a fixed income. And I know you've said my time was up, but he did ask me questions, so I continued on. Can I answer anything else for you?
No, thank you.
I've also, the transfer station, I've heard they own the, no one owns the water, but JUI will own the transfer station. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very simple and very sweet. I'm Tasha Adams. I live approximately 2.7 miles away from Rockwell. I moved to Jefferson County for its beauty, for its history, for the people, and it's heartbreaking that we've allowed this industry into our community. It breaks my heart. I am ready to cry. Couple things always bothers me when I hear jobs, 150 jobs. I said this at Harper's Ferry. I'm going to repeat myself. Procter &amp; Gamble can't fill their jobs. There are jobs available at, at Procter &amp; Gamble. There are jobs available at Macy's. Do we need those jobs here? No. There's transportation. People have cars. Get a job at Procter &amp; Gamble. They're looking for people. That's one thing, and that's, that bugs me. The other thing that bugs me, and I don't have the number, but the state law says that you can't build a school within a distance, in a certain distance, I don't know how many miles it is, from, from, pardon me?
It's not .4, I can tell you that.
Yeah, you can't build industry or a school by industry. That's law. That's state law. So how the hell did we build a factory so close to four schools? How did that happen? That's what I want to know. I would love somebody to answer that for me, because I tell you the truth, it bothers the hell out of me.
Ma'am, your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Glenn in Shepherdstown again. I'm a facts gal. I went to not just one, but two of Rockwell's open houses because I had a lot of questions. I have six pages of notes from folks I spoke with. I have a great rapport with Michael Zarin. He's actually a very nice guy. And I feel bad for the company, for the situation that they're in, because I don't think they realized, and us citizens certainly didn't realize. But I want to tail off of what Michael, Mike Brittingham was saying in terms of air pollution and quantities and whether it is healthy or harmful. I want to share a quote with you that was said to me by Anthony Abbott, who was the head of sustainability for Rockwell. He told me that this was not, quote, "not going to impact your air quality whatsoever." And I wrote it down in front of him, and I said, "Sir, are you willing to stand by that statement?" And he proceeded to go on with another sentence about how this was not going to impact our air quality, further explaining. And I repeated my question to him, "Are you willing to stand by that?" And he repeated himself, and he said, "This is not going to negatively impact your air quality whatsoever." And affirmed that, yes, he was willing to stand by that statement. I went to the Rockwell Open House looking for facts, and I don't consider that a fact. I consider that a myth. I don't see how you can add hundreds of tons of pollutants into the air of known carcinogenic material and not negatively impact. And I feel like that, that is, undermines their credibility. I got a lot of scientific questions answered. I'm a question gal. I've had emails with Mr. Zarin thanking me for our dialogue. I'm presently looking for a material safety data sheet on their binders. I have asked him for that because I understand they're not going to be bringing in separate individual chemicals. They will come in pre-mixed. I'm curious what, what will be transported across our highways.
Thank you, ma'am. Your time is up. All right, well, that concludes our public comment. Appreciate everyone for coming out tonight and sharing your feelings and views. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to reports. I have nothing to add today. Board one. Board two.
Regarding the car show, I just want to thank the extra efforts, extra officers on hand from the Charles Town Police Department and the deputy from the Sheriff's Department who did a great job keeping the event. I'm sorry, we got a meeting going on right now? Thank you. Plus, I would like to give special thanks to Major Phil Sudan and his group of dedicated cadets from the Air Force Junior ROTC program from Jefferson High School. They were there at the very start, parking cars, selling raffle tickets, tabulating results, and simply just being there to help. Major Sudan has many former students attending military academies throughout the country. And a special shout out to Jared, who was the one, took one for the team, and it was assigned to me to keep me out of trouble. Also, congratulations to all our future tennis stars who recently had their awards ceremony today at Jefferson Memorial Park for a great tennis season. So, thank you.
Thank you. Board three. Board four.
I'll defer to you, then I'll follow up. Okay. On, let's see, the 22nd, I attended the Charles Town Utility Board meeting. They swore in Mayor, Mayor of Ranson, and as the board member, they elected a secretary slash treasurer, I believe it was Kevin Testor. I didn't write that down. Okay. It was Kevin Testor. Didn't write down the important things. And discussed the Supreme Court case of the PSD consolidation. The next meeting will be held on the 12th at 4:00 in this very room, and will be recorded and put up on our website to increase our transparency. And I will also be attending the next PSD meeting, which is next Monday for my nice four-hour-long meeting.
Sounds like fun.
Yes.
We're into our third year of partnership with the First Fruits Farm in Maryland, just, just below the Pennsylvania border north of Baltimore, and we distribute food for all over the county. In fact, I drove a truck or was part of a crew, a truck went to Fairmont last Wednesday, and tomorrow we driving a truck to Charles Town. And of course, Charleston, excuse me, and of course, we do local stuff as well. The, we dropped off three bins, about 3,000 pounds of potatoes right here at the county community ministry.
Wow.
It's kind of an exciting thing. We're doing potatoes right now. It is the time of the year for potatoes, but they do other vegetables as well, corn and, and certain things like that. So, you know, it's great and well, the First Fruits Farm, I thought was a really great, great name for that, what they did. Everything they grow, they give away.
That is great to hear, and thank you for volunteering to do that.
My pleasure.
All right, we're at committee reports. We have 2965 vacant structures board report.
I'll, I'll be quick. I'll defer most of this and blend it into the conversation under referrals to committees. But as you can see by the visual report, we've been busy, and it's now time to consider some money to start demolishing houses that we have gone through the legal process for. So they're on the list. They're public. Nothing to hide. We've been going through this for two years with the folks, and we have the, the process down. So I'll discuss more when I hit you guys up for 50,000.
I was going to ask you what the amount was.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Let's move on to 2979 city manager's report.
So just a couple of quick points. One, as I've indicated, we did have a computer virus affect the city server. Again, I think the council tablets are fine, but if you see any suspicious activity, please let us know that. Attached to the city manager's report are the answers to the questions we sent to Mount Air Gas, so I just want to draw your attention to that, and also the fact that we have reached out to the DOH regarding the intersection down there at West Virginia 51 and Summit Point. So we talked about that at the last meeting. We have reached out to our elected officials, and we'll follow up with a call this week. And then the final thing, or I'm sorry, two other things. One is, we'll do the Rouse Hall, at least I'm working on trying to set up the Rouse Hall workshop for the next council meeting. So that would be September 17th at 6:00 PM. So, so look for that to happen. That's the Rouse Hall lease. And the final thing is, I had sent out to the group, we're looking for a volunteer to appear at a happy retreat event on September 15th. So if there's anyone interested in maybe representing the city at that event, they're looking for somebody to speak for a couple of three minutes, talk about the importance of Charles Washington to our city. They're about to place a historic marker over there, so anybody who might be interested, let me know by tomorrow.
I, I will go, Daryl.
So, okay, mayor, I will let them know that you'll, you'll be there. Thank you. That's it.
Mr. Mayor, speaking about the workshops.
Yes.
I, I really think, I don't know if this is appropriate time to bring it up, but we, I would really like to know what our legal responsibilities are with this sewer thing coming up.
So, yeah, as, as just a reminder again, we will meet, so at the September 17th meeting, we have invited the attorneys to be here. We'll go into executive session to talk about the legal risks associated with, you know, the vote, which we are planning for an October 1st date. So there will be an opportunity to talk at that point about, I mean, I think that issue. We'll also then be meeting at a special meeting on September 24th to go over the permit modification to the, to the sewer discharge permit. So there have been lots of comments here about what will be put into the waste system, but the utility board will be here to talk about what's actually in the permit document itself.
September 24th, utility meeting or a city council meeting?
So that'll be city council, special meeting here.
September 24th.
On September 24th. So you'll have, we'll have a meeting on the 17th, where we'll have the attorneys in to talk about the legal risk. We'll have the utility board in on the 24th to talk about the permit, and then we're teeing that up then for the sewer vote to occur on October 1st. So hopefully you'll have-
We also have a building commission, right?
Building commission is scheduled to meet on the 1st as well, but I think they're likely to table their action until they've gotten some direction from city council on how to proceed.
I really like to know all the ins and outs of this whole thing, depending on what our quote-unquote requirements and agreements and understandings are with the whole consolidation with the sewer thing.
That's a great point. So if anybody's got specific questions, I certainly have alerted the attorneys that we want to know, understand the legal- to table their action until they've gotten some direction from city council on how to proceed.
I'd really like to know all the ins and outs of this whole thing, depending on what our quote-unquote requirements and agreements and understandings are with the whole consolidation with the sewer thing.
That's a great point. So, if anybody's got specific questions, I certainly have alerted the attorneys that we want to know, understand the legal obligations. I think we also want to understand what the state law requirements are with respect to what I think they call an alternate mainline agreement, which is part of what I think Councilman George alluded to earlier, that there was something like that in the works with Rantzen before the consolidation of our utilities. They actually were doing it through an MOU and going through the PSC process. But when it moved over to us, we actually are doing it, I think, through an alternate mainline agreement. So, we'll have the attorneys talk about, you know, the mechanics of that as well.
Ask them also what the expectations are.
Okay.
What our legal requirements are before...
Exactly. The expectations of what the original agreements were and then what we have been saddled with here.
I believe Hoy and Stump.
And, yes.
And maybe somebody, well, the 24th, we have somebody else too.
Right. That's probably going to be, is it Eric Lewis? Am I saying that right? Or not Eric Lewis, I'm sorry. Richard Lewis, who is the attorney for our utility, one of the attorneys for the utility board.
For our permit.
Yes.
So, the 24th will be 7:00 then?
Yes.
Daryl, Daryl, is there some way you can wave your magical wand and we can get at least maybe a half briefing on, because you're the most quoted person in all the emails I've gotten in the last week. And many of the members have come up and said, you know, "Tell, you know, Daryl Hennessy to vote no on the..."
Yeah, that's the water bond.
...JSC, V.C. Water Bond. Can we get a briefing on that? Because I know nothing about that.
On the water bond?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, what I was going to do, yeah, let me see if I can have somebody be prepared to address that issue on the 17th as well. The mayor has asked me, I think, to tee up for one of our meetings, some direction to me out of vote on the water bond. So, if we do that on the 17th, that'll give us direction for the vote, which is scheduled for the 18th. So, I'll try to do that. But what I guess I need to do is get somebody in the room who can also talk then about the obligations under the water bond and the Jefferson County development role in that. Okay.
Thank you.
If there's any liability to us on that. I don't think it should be.
The workshop will be at 6:00 then, the Monday before?
Yeah. So, the workshop, yes, on Rouse Hall lease would be at 6:00.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Any other questions for Daryl? All right, let's move on.
Oh, I do have a question. Can we post the Mountaineer Gas on our website and just notify people that it is up there, that they did answer, well, they answered some of the questions?
Yep.
All right. Sounds good.
And I think somebody did ask us for that. Did we send that to them?
So, I'll send off, although I think actually...
I think I did, yeah.
You already did that? Okay.
But it went, anyone else went hurt.
Yeah, I want it up on the website, just in case.
All right. Let's move on to 2966, annual crime report.
Let me jump back before we get into that. Just have a few housekeeping things. Wanted to mention, I wasn't at the last meeting. Son had a football game. It was great to be able to watch him. But I want to thank you all for the support with the SRO position for Washington High School, that perspective looking forward. The school board actually voted to approve that as well. So, now we're currently in the backfill phase of this to where we have to backfill the position to put the officer in. So, we're currently in the hiring process, wanted to replace a position and to add this one. So, again, we're in the background phase. We'll have more in the coming weeks. Then we'll get into an interview-type phase. The mayor will be a part of that. I may ask a couple of you to be involved in that as well. I did pass out July, we are in a new fiscal year, so I handed out July stats, pretty self-explanatory, pretty static of what we typically see each month. Car show did go well. I haven't received any complaints. You know, I think grows, it seems like every year. You know, we had a lot of cars, a lot of people. So, it seemed that things worked out well. Back to the SRO position, well, it's a PRO is what they call it. There's different language or, I guess, acronyms for it. But did apply for a grant that would be up to about $20,000 to help support the school board and the city with cost.
So, that will be, that will be an additional to the 60, right? That will be, that would augment the 60.
Well, part of the agreement was that we'd offset some costs to the school board and to the city. So, we'll basically split 50/50. So, we'll know, I don't know when we'll know if we get the grant. But I'm at the deadline. We've got the paperwork in.
But just to clarify, I apologize. So, the school board is pointing up 60K, right?
That would be if we didn't get the grant. The agreement would be, then they would do 50, and we would give them 10,000 of that.
Of the grant. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
I did send you out an email regarding a video that was put on by our federal partners. It was called "Fentanyl, the Real Deal." We partnered with them. They asked us for some help in the community. I think it's a good training video for first responders, law enforcement, and fire. That went live nationally a couple days ago. So, if you get a chance, take a look at it. I think it depicts the department well, the city, our surroundings. So, I was glad we could help them. You know, every year fiscally, I do an annual report. Typically, what that does is paint a pretty good picture of what we saw, what our police department did throughout the year. You know, things were up and down through the year. Obviously, calls to services were up, traffic contacts were up. But what more importantly, what I look at is crime trends. I look at violent crime. And I'm happy to report, we don't have a lot of violent crime. We're not having murders. We're not having shootings. We're not having stabbings. That's a good thing. We are in a safe community, and part of my goal as chief is to, you know, police for our community. We want to be a good partner, and I think we're doing that. So, I'm proud of the effort. It's the 15 police officers that go out here every day, work nights, weekends, and holidays. They're the ones that need to be committed. So, obviously, if you run into one of them, thank them because they're the ones working that holiday. They're the ones out here in the cold, the rain. So, I'm proud of their efforts. Each year, you know, we tend to meet this goal. And I'm happy that, you know, I think some of our violent crime, well, it wasn't really a violent crime. We had two bank robberies this year. We were able to solve both of those. So, time in and time out, my staff, you know, gets a case, whether it may be a sexual assault, maybe a burglary. You know, again, you know, we can't solve everything, but for the most part, we solve a lot of crimes, and I'm proud of that. So, certainly, I'm not going to really go over all of this, but I know Mike's got a few questions. Anybody else, please? You know, you could do it now. I know it's late. You can certainly call me. I'll go over anything. You know, one of the things is, we did have 16 overdoses this year in the city of Charlestown. I mean, we're a small area. We have a small population. We have a lot of folks that come through here every day. So, a handful of those were fatal, and the other ones weren't. So, it's a difficult stat for us to really control because these are the only ones that we get called to. I mean, maybe we didn't get called to an EMS. They typically come out as an EMS assist. We got to determine what they overdosed on, and it's complicated. A lot of times, we won't know until we get the ME's report and tells us. So, Michael?
Okay. Thank you. And I thank you. The level of detail every year just keeps rising, and I really appreciate this. I love data. And this really gives a detailed thing. I have about, I had six questions. I will send the rest to you. I just want to, I think, focus in on two. And strangely enough, the thing that scares me the most are the number of people that it's almost gone through the roof of, that need, don't have registration, don't have insurance, or don't have their license. Number of things has increased incredibly. So, that surprised me from last year. But I did want to talk about the use of force, of which is steady, as, you know, the vast majority of times are dispatching animals. But there were two times where the taser was shown or threatened to subdue a person. The question I had was, do all of the town police officers have tasers? And if not, because I would prefer non-lethal always over lethal, if not, should we arm them with non-lethal takedown capabilities, the tasers?
Yeah. I mean, we've, the city, you know, the department has invested greatly in that. You know, all the officers, they wear body worn cameras. They got GPS in their cars. They've got in-car cameras. Everything they do is documented. And we do have, all the patrol officers have less lethal options, whether it's a pepper spray, a taser, a baton if needed. You know, so, that's nothing new. That's the norm for them. You know, but I go back and I look, over 10,000 contacts a year, you know, to have a dozen or so use of forces, and most of them are putting down a deer or an animal. You know, really, I don't even think that should be classified in that section. But that's something as a department will work on down the road. But whether it's a takedown, a knee strike, you know, I'm pretty proud of that. And the guys should be commended on that. And that's a lot of contacts for a small agency. You know, we're tasked with policing, what, 56, 5700 residents in Charlestown? We got over 40,000 that come through here on a daily basis. So, those are, you know, you got to look at all that stuff. So, you know, I'm pleased with that. And again, Bob and I have actually been working on an equipment list, trying to develop a way to replace that because that is the challenge. You look at a taser option for an officer, you're probably looking anywhere from 15 to $2,000. Again, they got a shelf life of about four years. Again, we got to replace this stuff. So, those are, that would be a challenge, but we have that option, that capability.
It's a 1,500 per officer?
You know, obviously, we're going to try to work through that in our, you know, our capital improvement. And Daryl's been good with us about trying to find that funding. And we have a lot of needs. I mean, unfortunately, the police department's expensive. The equipment and the technology we have is through the roof.
We're developing more realistic plan, a capital improvement plan really to kind of support the chief and the things that he has to buy over the years and not all of a sudden, oh, jeez, we have to buy this, and we got to find money for that. Hopefully, we can put it in a budgetary process to where we can capture these expenses that come up. A lot of times, they're not year to year, but if, you know, if you have to buy 14 tasers or something like that one year, if you have it budgeted throughout the time, you know, it's going to be a lot easier to swallow. So, that's kind of what we're working on from the finance.
I had a plan at one of your openings, but I'm too old.
Yeah. Well, there's, seems like...
I was trying to do that too, you know.
But we've got a long list. Let's go. We could pass the PT though, couldn't we?
I don't know.
And I won't, I won't, because I'll email that to you, and we can talk more about that. But we've had a kind of an increase in a couple of things along Main Street there. And it seems to be connected to drug or opioid use.
It could be. Well, we found with a lot, any drug crimes, I mean, we're not immune. We have it. We have all types of crime here in the city. We just don't have it every day. Knock on wood. But yes, I mean, when I look at my petty thefts, shoplifting, breaking into cars, some of those are crimes of opportunity. Somebody walks by, car's unlocked, there's loose change in the cup holder. They're going to take it. There's a computer on the, anything they can pawn, they're going to do that. We just had a case where the officers took initiative. They went out, they set up in an unmarked car, and the guy was going car to car, and then he got to the unmarked car, and they're like, uh-oh. So, you know, that curve that activity. So, those are the proactive policing. And that's what's important. And I think that's why we have a, you know, again, I'll, you know, bet what I got on it, but we have a safe town. And that's because we're proactive. You have to be proactive. You cannot be reactive to this stuff. But the back to the opioid, to the drug, you know, they're looking for their next, you know, opportunity to purchase that drug or get it. So, you know, a lot of the, you know, I can't really speculate on a lot of cases because some of them are active. But in my years of policing, I can tie a majority of them back to drug, opiate, or just drug in general, reasons of why they did it. So, you know, there was a recent email out to the mayor, I think, believe addressed to the council. You know, the department is taking steps. I've taken steps. The city, we actually met with one of the landlords today. I'm not going to mention any names, but we're trying to work through, we've identified what we think is the problem. It's a combination of things. So, certainly, you know, we're working towards that. And I'm pleased that direction, the way we're going. But, you know, it's a tough situation because, you know, it's not a crime to sleep on a park bench. It's not a crime to sit on a park bench. You know, those are the difficulties that we see with this kind of stuff. I mean, we're stuck with our trespassing, our littering, you know, but none of those are jailable. And, you know, you go back to talking about registrations and driving suspended. If someone happens to get a speeding ticket and they don't pay it, their license gets suspended. So, again, I don't know what's the cause of that. Maybe they can't afford to pay it. I don't know. Anything else?
I have a question. Looking at our, I guess, helping other agencies, I've been noticing that it's been going up quite a bit. Is there some rationale behind this, or is it just...
It's a partnership. At the end of the day, it's, they do that for us. I just happen to keep it as a stat.
Okay. It just seems like it's jumped up quite a bit. I don't know.
Well, yeah, it hasn't, I hadn't really looked at it.
Does that include the member that's on that task force?
Yeah, we still have an officer.
I mean, is that included into that data?
No, no. This would be helping Rantzen, would be helping the Sheriff's Department, the state police. You know, at the end of the day, you've got one or two guys working a shift. You miss a moving part to it, you're going to count on your next guy to come help you. And as an agency, we've always done that, you know, whether it's going up to, on the mountain to assist in something, or them coming into Charlestown. It's a, it's a... Twenty-four more? You know, that's not too bad. But, come on, Michael.
I just want to make sure that we're not stretching ourselves so thin that we're not covering.
No, absolutely not. And that's, you know, again, we may have a major wreck on one of our roadways, four lanes, and I got a deputy, I got a trooper, I got a Rantzen City officer helping me shut the road down. So, I think it's kind of an eye for an eye. I think we...
Yeah. Just because I know we have holes, we have vacancies.
Oh, yeah.
And we're stretching. I don't want to burn out our guys as much, you know, we're already kind of doing that right now.
We kind of are. And, you know, and again, I think it's, you've heard me say it, and I don't want to harp on it, but, you know, when we're at minimum, or when we're at maximum, we're at minimum at the end of the day, if that makes sense. So, you know, at some point, you know, down the road, strategic planning and that kind of stuff, I'm going to be talking about that. Because, you know, if I have a missing part that takes offers on vacation, I got to backfill it with, you know, overtime or something like that. But that's a completely different conversation. But at the end of the day, Charlestown has a very safe town, I think. I've policed in it for 18 years now. I'm proud of what our guys have done. And each year, they continue to step up. And, you know, please, when you see them, thank them because they're the ones out doing that. Thank you. It took a lot of time.
Definitely concur. Definitely, you and the department are doing a wonderful job. All right. Let's move on to unfinished business. 2963, consideration of expansion of the historic overlay district.
Hi, Seth. And Seth, I'm sorry, I'm sorry you had to wait so long.
Happen, I think.
Going some things upstairs. I noticed possibly in your packet that the map didn't print appropriately. There's essentially, I'll try and...
It's really short. Essentially, there's just four areas of expansion. I'll call them mostly cleanup areas. But they have, three of the four areas have very specific purposes. Include the Webb Blessing House, include Fisherman's Hall, include Star Lodge. So, that's what some of them do. The other ones clean up Liberty Street a little bit to the north. And then on Water Street, I just extended it a little bit further, three parcels that are there. Over there on Liberty Street, really what we're taking in is the city's parking lot for Supertane, and then a couple of properties across the Ebbets Run Creek there. So, some bounty line cleanups. And that is really what the HLC had recommended to you all, and this is their recommendation coming before you. And then finally, the second component question you had, recommended back... And then finally, the second component question you had, recommended back to the HLC, was the funding program in non-contiguous areas. Clearly, what I'm showing you is the contiguous boundary, you had questions about funding outside that. Um, they figured the program was stronger as a unit than sort of individual lots outside that boundary in that regard, and so they proposed no change, um, to where the FIP dollars are used, and that stays within the contiguous area.
I was kind of, uh, buoyed by these, uh, by the non-contiguous party, properties, because it's kind of what we were talking about. It says it can happen in two ways, a property owner voluntarily requests to be included in the HOD, non-contiguous, right? And request of the FIP fund. So there's two avenues that they've acknowledged, if we were to adopt that, where there would be, uh, properties outside of a contiguous zone, right? So it, it sounds like i- it's a doable thing. It sounds like we wouldn't be breaking any protocol or any policy or any laws by allowing non-contiguous historic overlay districts. Is that what I'm reading here? I mean.
Um, I mean, it.
I thought for once we agreed on something, that's why, I was very excited.
Well, we agree, it's just a policy. It, it does appear that the ordinance sort of permits that, talks about being, you know, requesting to be in the historic district. So extrapolate a little bit into the historic overlay district itself as well. So I guess a property owner, you know, theoretically could ask to be in the HOD and then take part in the program. But again, the policy decision gonna be, once you're in, you're in, it's not for one thing and then back.
I, I, I concur with that, but that may solve some of the issues that we were talking about earlier.
But it's whether you wanna use your funds that way, I think it's a policy decision before you all.
Yeah, but just to make sure we're clear, so you, we, we sent these two questions off to the Historic Landmarks Commission. Um, so Seth had, I think, developed a, an option for them to consider which was this non-contiguous strategy. The recommendation, however, back from Historic Landmarks, is not to accept that policy change. Basically, they're saying it's okay to adjust the boundaries to add a few additional properties, which then are contiguous, but not to alter the program to allow a non-contiguous site to become available for facade improvement. That's the recommendation back from.
But that's not in this summary, right?
Well, the, the very top basically summarizes the September fourth, twenty-fifteen council meeting.
I would say maybe that summary is maybe not as complete as what Darrell basically indicated, that, you know, as part of the overall program of the FIP that's been allocated, it makes sense spending it in a contiguous area where those resources are most protected. And so that's the resource coming back to you in terms of a recommendation.
Yeah, um, the question that I had, which I think you've answered here back then, was, is it a doable thing? As far as, uh, with policy, well, not necessarily with policy, but with, as far as statute and all that goes. And from what I'm understanding here, that it is.
It's definitely possible a property owner could ask to be included, and then the question becomes will you all allow the funds to be used?
So that one, it would just be a matter of our policy?
That's correct.
Okay.
I think my official policy is I don't like Swiss cheese, so I really don't want non-contiguous. And I also don't.
We already have Swiss cheese.
I also don't like Swiss cheese, but that's, I just, I don't want, I don't.
We already have Swiss cheese.
Yeah, we already have plenty of Swiss cheese to go around, so.
A counterpane, if you will.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for that, for the work on that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I know you're waiting for me.
You know, I'm waiting.
But that's gonna fire off a motion.
This hour of night, a motion would be great.
Yeah.
A rubber stamp to the HLC.
Must admit, I'm, I'm just so damn happy that you've, you know, we have six, of the six probably most historical properties in, in this town, we've managed to expand the overlay two-thirds, and we managed to avoid putting those three, three of those properties in. This corrects that. Um, where I would love to have option two with Bob and the, I'd love to Swiss cheese this and add some more. I will say, at this point, I, I can live with this, that we get all, at least, we now have at least all six of the main historical properties in Charlestown included in the historical overlay.
What motion are we proposing here?
I think at this point, the motion's gonna have to be accept the recommendation of the HLC. From there, that will direct staff to set, you know, a notice requirement that's set forth in the codified code, which means you'll have a public hearing for the expansion of the overlay of those property owners, as we've done in the past.
Maybe just like, just like last time.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Were the three properties you're talking about?
Well, there's.
Well, the, the new border.
The, the new borders.
The new borders, so within that new borders, I didn't count the properties, but you're probably talking about, you know, twenty, twenty-five?
I'll go ahead and move that we, um, follow the proposed expansion areas outlined by Historic Landmarks Commission.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second, any further discussion?
How many properties are we talking about?
You have it, Seth, 'cause I asked you already. You had it.
I've got about twenty in there, Bob, I don't have the exact number.
And one of them's, one of them's us, isn't it?
Um, well, I mean, I guess we do, I think, own a parcel within that territory. Um, yeah, Bob, it's, it's gonna be about twenty by the time you take a look at them. So it's a relatively small expansion.
Was, so the main thing, the main reason for the expansion was to bring in these other properties, right, these historic properties?
Correct, and, and I don't think it hurts to clean up some of these edges, as I've talked about.
Okay. I'm counting twenty-five blocks.
Yes, about what I got to.
About, I'm, it's late, so I don't know.
It's late.
Yeah, okay, I'm glad, I, I confer with them, so.
Yeah.
About twenty-five.
Any further discussion?
Answered the questions I had.
Perfect. Hearing none, all in favor?
Uh, uh, so close.
No, is that, is that Mount Parvo?
Yes, that's Mount Parvo there, that is correct. That, that's extended to.
Gotcha.
We're all referring to the further western expansion area on Washington Street. It just creates a nice sort of divisionary point, I think.
So, I mean, have we talked to the, the property owners in this area?
You will when there's a public hearing, and if they so choose to attend a public hearing, they'll all get.
They'll receive notice, it'll be the same procedures we filed last time.
Maybe we haven't done any kind of preliminary footwork on this?
No, um, well, this is your preliminary footwork to make sure even we're happy with the boundary. So there's no sense of stirring up the public about something that might not occur. I mean, now, there's something more concrete, and we'll go to public hearing, and they actually get individual letters, so.
I'm assuming the Webb Blessing House and Star Lodge and they're all on board?
Correct.
I didn't see why they wouldn't be.
I mean, it, it basically kind of, you know, the oldest, I, I keep going into this, the oldest part of Charlestown, the beginning of Charlestown, was in the west end of Charlestown near Ebbets Run. And this more than the last time brings the, the historic, the oldest houses in the oldest part of Charlestown are now brought underneath our historical overlay.
I, I see the positive side of it for sure, but I also see the negative side of it. Because it, in some cases, and we've been through this, so I'm not gonna waste a lot of time.
It's legit, though, I understand.
Some cases, it puts up right against property rights, so. I'd be interested to see the folks that are coming here, that would, hopefully, all twenty-five of them will be here and express. Uh, and I think the idea that we, it doesn't have to be contiguous, gives us a little bit of, uh, flexibility perhaps. But I won't take up any more time, 'cause we've taken up a lot of time today.
Have we?
All right, so we have the motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All right, we'll move on to referrals to committees, twenty-nine seventy-seven.
We've got the, uh, legal counsel, the city attorney.
Oh, my gosh, yeah, I missed it, went right over that one. Twenty-nine seventy-one, legal counsel, consideration and possible action.
All right, so, um, it's, it's, uh, it's been several months since the city has had a, uh, a full-time city attorney. And, uh, so this is, although it's late in the, in the hour, this is a very important issue, and I wanna make sure we spend at least a little bit of time talking about it. Um, so, basically, what we've done is, uh, we put out a request for qualifications and asked for firms that were in and around the Charlestown area that would be interested in, asked them who would be interested in serving as our city attorney. We did receive four requests back, and I've listed all of those on page fifty-five in your packet. And what you have in your packet, however, are the top two proposals that we received. So of the four that we received, staff, including the chief, myself, Todd Wilt and Seth Rivard, we scored the proposals based on the qualifications, uh, to determine who we thought best responded to the, uh, to the, to the proposal itself, and articulated that they could help the city, um, with its, all of its legal needs. Um, based upon that, the staff has, has rank ordered the four proposals, uh, as following. Uh, Michael Fox, or I'm sorry, Michael Funk, sorry, with Steptoe and Johnson as the, um, as the recommended choice. Um, but Christopher Cox and, and Christopher Peterson with Kay Casto and Chaney. Um, I will add that they were a very, very close second, and so that's the reason I put both of the proposals in the packet for you, and I'll talk just a little bit more about what we think separates the first one from the second one. Uh, we did receive, uh, proposals from Pollan, Fowler, Flanagan, Brown and Poe, and then also one from the Crawford Law Group. Um, so, of the, of the two that were in the packet, like I said, the staff recommendation is for the first one. Um, we adopted a li- what I'll call a little bit of a hybrid approach, it's not outlined in law as to how you go about selecting your city attorney. Um, but what we did is basically, like I said, we put out a request for qualifications. And the process there basically is you determine on, on qualifications first, and then after that, you basically negotiate price in terms with, uh, whoever the selected, um, proposer is. So what we think separates Steptoe and Johnson from the other proposals, um, is that, um, they have extensive knowledge of the civil service, um, uh, laws. Forty percent plus of the city's budget is in the public safety arena. Um, I think our previous attorney did not have this level of sophistication as it relates to that, so we've, we had to go out and get some additional legal counsel, uh, support. So by hiring a, a firm like Steptoe and Johnson to be our city attorney, um, you know, we would not have to have this sort of side agreement with somebody to do the civil service work. Uh, they've got a strong labor law attorney that would be part of the core legal group, um, which would allow us to replace another contract that we have with an HR firm that we are currently paying twenty-four thousand dollars a year, too. So we think there could be significant savings by, by adding this firm as our attorney, um, with, again, with the labor law professional assigned to the, um, uh, to our particular contract. Four of the five attorneys that they mentioned in their proposal that would service the city are in the Martinsburg area. Uh, they've offered a very, very competitive blended rate of two-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars per hour, uh, which is, we think, highly, um, uh, which is a very, very competitive rate for a highly respected, uh, legal firm across the state. So, so we think there are lots of advantages to, to the Steptoe, uh, proposal. So again, those, for our, from staff's perspective, we think that's what separates them. Having said that, like I said, the second applicant is very, very close, and I just wanna make sure that we, as staff, weren't missing something that's important to you, uh, as city council. So what separates maybe the second group from, uh, from Steptoe and Johnson is they have demonstrated more, um, expertise and more focus in the community development area, uh, land use, zoning, those types of issues. Um, although we have talked to Steptoe and Johnson, and they've assured us that they have onboard legal staff that can an- provide answers to those questions for us. If we were to select Kay Casto and Chaney, they would provide maybe greater diversity of service providers. I do know that we're, um, we rely on Steptoe and Johnson for some other issues at the moment. I know at least one member of council, maybe two, who think that it would be beneficial to have, uh, a wider range of legal services supporting the city, and that maybe adding Steptoe and Johnson as our city attorney might not give us that kind of diversity, whereas Kay Casto and Chaney would do that. They seem to, their strengths seem to be, uh, utilities and PSC work. Uh, they emphasized that in their response. Again, city staff didn't necessarily rate that as high, because we felt like we had that kind of support, um, through, uh, Hoy Singleton and the Utility Board. However, uh, Hoy is not representing city council, he's representing the attorney, or the, the school, or the Utility Board. Their blended rate is about three hundred dollars an hour, so they're also very, very close on price. Uh, but of the ten attorneys they said that would provide support to the city, only two of those were in the Martinsburg area, the others were scattered elsewhere in the state, so. Um, so anyway, those are the two proposals, again, staff recommendation is for Mike Funk as the lead attorney and Steptoe and Johnson as our new city attorney. Um, but certainly open to answer any questions that you have. What we're looking for is a recommendation from council to proceed with, um, um, negotiating a, a contract with, uh, with the, with the firm. What I'm suggesting is a one-year agreement with two, at least two annual renewals.
So did you say Hoy worked for Kay Casto and Chaney?
No, 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 he doesn't. What I'm saying is Kay Casto and Chaney, they indicated that they were pretty strong on the utility front. And what I'm saying is, is we thought about it from a staff perspective, we do have a utility board, and Hoy serves as the lawyer for the utility board. But he's not our lawyer, so that's, that's what I'm saying. I mean, in retrospect, I mean, maybe you would think we need to get a little bit more, uh, expertise for utilities for the city council, and that maybe Hoy isn't, um, again, he isn't primarily representing us, he's primarily representing Utility Board.
Yeah, I, when I first saw this, my first indication was exactly what you were saying, the diversity of legal representation. But I don't know that, that is necessarily a showstopper for me, I don't, but, uh, and it is a year with two option years, right, so.
That's what I'm proposing, yep.
I think that. Say again?
Not a showstopper between what?
Oh, not having a diversity, having just one kind of repres- legal representative that's handling up the bonds and all this other stuff that we're dealing with, Steptoe and Johnson with, is.
Right.
Because it's, it's a year, I mean, they have, you know, I, obviously, you've done your due diligence, and they have the talent that we need, I believe. I think if there was, I just can't imagine, I'm not a lawyer, obviously, but I just can't imagine, like, a, a conflict of interest or anything like that developing. But, I don't know, what do you guys think?
I mean, we already use Steptoe and Johnson for quite a bit.
We, we do.
We send a lot of stuff from personnel up to them to review.
Yep.
Especially on the police side, uh, 'cause there's all kinds of messes.
Yeah, Mr. Funk has helped us out on many occasions on personnel.
And so, I mean, I've, I haven't had any problems dealing with them ever before.
Yeah, and at the moment, we're paying a higher rate than they propose.
Yes, we are paying a much higher rate than what they're proposing.
On, on the other hand, um... I, I feel differently. This, having Steptoe and Johnson as our primary lawyer when it's also our bond attorney for the utility is, is, is just, it's, it's a conflict waiting to happen. The, the, it, because that utility, we appoint all five members to that utility, and that utility board then hires the attorneys, the accountants, the lawyers, everybody is hired by that utility, including the, 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 uh, Jane staff, everybody. That, there is a, the way we wrote that ordinance, fourteen oh seven, basically firewalls this council from the intruding into the activity of that utility board. Steptoe and Johnson is the bond attorney. If we were to pick up Steptoe and Johnson, it would be the equivalent, particularly with John, it would be the equivalent of our utility lawyer giving advice both to the utility board and to the city council. This utility is about to grow, it's about to become a major utility in the state of West Virginia. There are times when it could, there is conceivably times when this council will conflict with its own utility board. And we have to realize that our utility board acts in many ways completely separate from this council, and I think we need separate representation. I don't mind going to Steptoe sometimes for the other things, but for utility work, I think we need a utility attorney that is separate.
Hoy is separate. John Stump is the bond attorney.
Same. He, John Stump has been crucial to giving advice during this entire consolidation process.
True. And I, how does that, I'm sorry, I, how does that bleed over into the city's business?
I think it's not gonna bleed over into the city's business, it's gonna bleed over into the, the, the separation between the, the utility and the council, where you have the same attorneys.
Correct me if I'm wrong, though, but he's the bond attorney for us, correct?
Correct.
We set the bond, we approve the bonds, we approve, we, we vote for the rates. We set the, we approve the bonds, we approve, we vote for the rates.
He doesn't work for CTUB, he works for.
Right, so he doesn't work for the utility, he works for us. And, and I don't understand, because we have John Stump, but we've been dealing with Steptoe on a whole, I'm sure we've been dealing with Steptoe, I'm even aware of, that we've been dealing with Steptoe on different issues. I'm aware of a good hunk of them, but I guess I don't see the conflict between our bond attorney, he's our bond attorney, he's not CTUB's bond attorney. He's our bond attorney.
Whose funds does, does that come, whose funds pay him? Yes, but we're responsible for the bonds. No, but, but who's, who writes the check to, to, to Steptoe and Johnson for his hours?
Yeah, I mean.
At CTUB.
And for the, for the one, for the issue that's in front of us today, yes, CTUB is paying him for that service, that's right.
As well as all our bond work.
Has it all, and again, I've not been here long enough to know, I mean, are there other bond issues that have not been through the utility board that have been straight to the, well, I mean, was.
I don't know if.
That's what I mean, I think he was involved in the financing. Six sixty-one, I think he was involved in that transaction as well. I mean, he has been involved in other issues where the city has had debt. So he has represented the city, I guess, as our council.
I think my fear is that, you know, there was the, there was the state bill, two-three-four, that was signed in two thousand and fifteen, that effectively said, if you are a large municipal utility in the state of West Virginia, you are now responsible for the approval of bonds, for the approval of projects, and for the approval of construction projects. So we no longer have the PSC to, to kind of backstop us and provide a lot of that expertise on utility issues. We have to, we have to, to get a lot of that from our own attorneys. And I'm not comfortable with having the same attorney that is paid by the utility board also being the attorney for this council.
So we did ask as part of the RFP process about conflicts of interest. Their response is on page sixty in the packet. It basically says that they would not represent a client that was, that believed to be adverse to the city. So I don't know that they would see a Charlestown utility as adverse to the city, I think they would see it as, again, I don't think they would see that, they would not probably see that as a conflict.
Right, I don't think they would, I do. I really do. I think two-thirty-four, signed in two thousand and fifteen, changes the game. It really does.
But we, we, this body approves the bonds, when it comes down to it.
But, you know, those bonds are, you know, two hundred, two-hundred-and-fifty pages long, they're very, very complicated. And the same person, since we no longer have the PSC in Charleston to backstop us and give us that expertise and to sign off on these things, the same person that is in effect creating those bonds, putting them together.
Same person, not the firm necessarily, right?
Well, the utility, the utility portion of the firm is putting those together under the general direction of John.
Right, but if we're not comfortable with that, maybe we need to have a different CTUB attorney.
I don't think they, according to their, their conflict of interest, I don't think they see that this is a conflict.
No, I'm saying if we, as this body, has an issue with the way the bonds come out now for the utility board, then we have an issue with that, the attorney that's representing them now. Right? Is that what we're saying here? I, I'm trying to understand what the conflict would be. I understand that, I mean, by far the most money that flows through here are these bonds for the utility board, but they're already doing that. So if they represent the city on all these other, the company or the firm represents the city on all these other issues, how is that a conflict for what they're doing? I may be missing something, that's why I'm asking.
No, I, I think you're getting, you're, you're right there. There, you know, there is, fourteen oh seven, the ordinance that we repassed a couple of months ago, says we basically firewalled this council off from all of the decisions made by our utility board. When that utility board has a recommendation on projects, on, on rates, on bonds, on construction projects and everything else, they are then to jump across the firewall and present us with this package. And then we are to vote on it. If we have the same attorney that's, that's developing that package for bonds, for rates, then jumps across the thing and says, oh, we're your attorney, we're your, we're the Charlestown council's attorney on this too, and we recommend passage. But for me, I would prefer, at least for the utilities, a separate attorney or a separate law firm than the one that represents CTUB.
Wouldn't that be a lot more expensive?
I don't, I, that's a good question.
I, I think the, the, for me, I understand your concern, but the pros don't outweigh the cons here. You know, because of the experience that we have, especially in civil service, I don't know, I'm a, I'm a little reluctant.
I, I understand now what you're saying, but I think that, that, that particular attorney is already jumping over the firewall, as you put it now, and presenting us these other deals. We're not getting necessarily any other legal advice whether or not to approve these projects.
And, and I think that's the problem. Going forward, folks, you know, we, we have got this equalization issue to deal with. We have got these rates things, we have got lots, we are going into parts of this county that we have never been in. We are going to be dealing with seat, not seizure, but many of the issues, the legal issues that the PSC, PSD has to deal with out into the county and in Ranson. I think it pays us to have separate legal counsel between us and our utility board. In fact, I, the, the two-thirty-four almost says that we, we should provide some mechanism so that we, we can check our own utility board. Because right now, we are the PSC, Public Service Commission, of our own utility board. We are now hiring, if we would hire Steptoe and Johnson, we would be hiring the same council of our utility board would be the council of the PSC that regulates the utility board.
But with, with all due respect, Mike, I'm going to go ahead and throw out a motion that we approve Steptoe and Johnson.
So I can, a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Thank you everyone for that. Let's move to twenty-nine seventy-seven, referral to finance, vacant structures board requests for demolition funds.
Thank you council members. So let me just start by saying, you know, we ended up here after a lot of discussion, notice to property owners. And we kind of take this pretty serious, this request, we understand that this results in a pretty significant impact to some property owners. But at the end of the day, even if you approve this, there are other legal steps to go through, notifications and procedures. But we've sort of ended up here because we're not getting compliance. And for the program to have any meaningful impact, we can't rely on voluntary compliance. Because what happens is others realize that nothing's happening, and so why should they comply? Is part of the component, in addition to the fact that, you know, there are people living next to these vacant houses, they're no fault of their own, and are suffering. And then, you know, chief could have discussion about the impacts with his department and vagrants and the negative impacts from there. So in short, I'd like, well, the VSB has asked you to allocate fifty thousand dollars a year until these properties are remedied. This is a recommendation to go to finance committee. I could say probably we could do four properties a year in terms of demolition, I provided a list there for you. Some of these properties have been in these conditions for over a dozen years with no real change. That's the request, I just go off to finance, but that's the request of the vacant structures board to you all.
So I'd make a motion that we forwarded to the, or referred to the finance committee, but we're going to have a lot of questions. So I would say have a very complete package, and the legal ramifications need to be part of that. And I would like to have a breakdown in cost as well. Fifty thousand dollars is a nice round figure, but it'd be great to have a breakdown in cost of where this money's getting.
I'll cautiously, cautiously second that motion by Mr. Trainor.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
I do have a question. In the text, it says thirty thousand, and then it went up to fifty thousand, is there?
That was a motion by the vacant structures board.
Okay, because it says here, VSB makes a motion to request thirty thousand dollars in the text.
That was staff's recommendation, and then I thought further up in the amended.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, for this meeting, yeah.
For recommendation, but they said fifty.
I mean, I guess we'll answer the question at finance, but.
And I think the thirty thousand dollars was, you know, we, we have several houses now that are on the, that we have declared that need to be demolished, we've ordered them demolished. The other thing is that I think we would hope that finance, or at least I would hope that finance is creative. And say if there's any small chunks of change every year that maybe can be contribute, put into this account, and maybe turn it into a revolving fund so that the vacant structures board can use it. Anything that's coming out of historical landmarks that you don't give out, you could consider going into there. The other option is not to possibly, to look at possibly, if we can't demo the property, to put a coat of paint on it, fix it up, and make it at least appear, clean the yard up, clean it up, and bring it back within to the standards of the community. A lot of times, the neighbors will tolerate a whole lot more, at least if the property is, if we can't demo it, we may be able to bring it down. And that may only cost, you know, a couple thousand dollars to, to bring it back.
So, is a referral to the finance company, you're asking to create a fund, or are you asking for it to demolish certain buildings?
I think would be to create a fund.
Is that what we're, we're?
That's the motion out of the vacant structures board is to allocate the fifty thousand dollars until vacant structure issue is remedied. So right now, you have a list before you, some of those could be, or resolved, some may end up requiring removal by city action.
Now, are we allowed to put a lien on a house?
Well.
Or property?
So, let me give you a quick rundown without getting into too much detail, because I'm sure it'll come back. But to your point about concern is, we know approximately, depending on cost and everything, it's going to be about fifteen thousand, the house could be up to twenty. It could be less if somebody's able to get a bulk rate of three, let's say. That's just on the cost, but back to the lien issue is, yes, you can put a lien on the property, and this is not the first time the city's done, city-initiated annex. It's probably been about four years. But what ends up happening, and the numbers you won't like, but this is the reality, is by the time you get all your legal costs in and demolition cost on a lot, you're going to lien up the lot, it's going to cost you fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars, whatever that number is. And then you're going to have a lot that's only worth eight to nine thousand dollars. So what we're going to do is then proceed with legal mechanism to get the lot, because, you know, we're owed that money and we need some value out of this. Plus, the other thing is, the property owner clearly didn't maintain the property beforehand, or else we wouldn't be demolishing it. Now they have a property that's now going to become a yard maintenance violation where it's never cut, never maintained, those sort of things. I mean, our goal is not to pry property out of people's hands. This is like, not where we want to be, but we're forced into this situation if we want to have a better community that looks well capped and upcap. And, you know, you have citizens next to houses that, no fault of their own, are vacant and we can't get anything done.
So we don't acquire the property till?
That's correct, correct, because you have to lien it up to a certain point. I mean, this is very legalistic, you know, we've done this before. You know, some of these are, I mean, it gets a little bit funky, but some of these have been in multiple heirs, you know? It's been sitting around so long that, you know, it's dated to you, you pass away, your children are now heirs, and so we have split fractional ownership, and we've got to track that down, and we've got to put notices in the paper to make sure we've covered all those, so it's, it's, it's a process.
So those are some of these questions that I'm going to have.
Certainly.
I think we will have, excuse me, at the finance committee when it happens. Which will be next Monday. Sixteen hundred.
All right, sounds good, any further discussion?
Sixteen hundred.
Sixteen hundred.
Yeah. These nice round numbers.
All right, all in favor?
So, yeah, I was going to say, do we get a motion?
Yeah, we did get a motion.
Motion and second, yep, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next Monday.
Motion carries. We're at twenty-nine sixty-eight, referral to finance fiscal policies.
So just wanted to give a heads up to, to the city council, I mean, staff is recommending that we refer to the finance committee, the task of developing the financial policies for the city. This can, issue's come up a couple of times recently, I just want to make sure I'm doing what the city wants me to do when it comes to, to the city's fiscal policies. It first came up when the chief asked me, I don't know, six months ago, do we have any financial policies he can put in as accreditation plan? And we didn't have any then. I checked with Tara, we don't really have any strong written financial policies on file. We do have some, some really good solid practices that we use, and we should just put those down in a policy document. So, so I'm asking that we refer to the finance committee, and I'll work with them to develop some policies that we'll ultimately bring back to council to adopt, similar to what we're doing with the personnel manual, that, you know, there should be some overall policies that help drive our actions, so.
Perfect.
I move that we refer the financial policies issued to the finance committee.
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion?
All I would say is if you could have ready the policies currently and your best practices.
Well, we will bring, yeah, to the, to the finance committee some recommendations.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Perfect.
Trying to make me work over here.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Twenty-nine fifty, referral to ordinance committee, heavy truck traffic on municipal roads.
So this just quickly, the street committee had considered an issue regarding, I think it was signage. And so there was an issue there, you guys were talking about the issue of heavy truck traffic down Mortington Avenue, and what should we do about that? So we just want to refer to the finance committee, the issue of heavy truck traffic through municipal roads.
Ordinance.
Ordinance, I'm sorry, ordinance, this issue, and make sure that we have got, you know, the right levels of, of ordinances in place so that the police can enforce these restrictions, so.
Is this just for Mortington Avenue, or is this?
Yeah, so this is, this is, it came up in the context of Mortington, but I think we want to talk about it on municipal streets.
I'll make a motion, do we send this to ordinance?
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I have one more question associated with this. It's just really quick. Several meetings ago, we talked about parking signs. Locating where parking, where, where, where are we with that?
So, are you talking about parking on?
They indicate we're parking, yes, signs that say parking.
Oh, oh, wayfinders, for parking lots.
I thought that several meetings ago, we had talked about looking into that.
Yes, wayfinding signs, yes, so that's actually one of the tasks that our new city planner, I think, is going to start working on.
Wayfinding?
Wayfinders.
Oh, okay.
Wayfinding signs, like.
Pointy signs.
That way I know next time what I'm going to call. I'm sorry.
You know, I know it's on Seth's list of priorities for the, for the upcoming year, and.
Okay.
Haven't developed them yet, but it's on his list.
Thank you.
All right, twenty-nine eighty, bills for approval.
I move we approve the bills.
Motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Before we adjourn, I'd like to thank the gentleman from Ranson for sticking it out to the end. There you go, boy.